To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I want to welcome everybody to our May 17 meeting. Please note the council is in full attendance. And the first item on our agenda is the election results. And I see that man coming straight to the podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. I have, my name is George Matthews, I live at 104 West Stateon here in Victoria. You have the certification of the election results. These are the vote totals of all the votes cast in the election held on May 7, 2016, for city council. If you have any questions about the process of the election or any of the vote totals, you are welcome to go to the county website, the election's homepage, and look at election night reporting, which would give you a complete breakdown of each one of the election precincts, as well as each one of the votes cast. And it's probably, for those who like to dwell into the nitty gritty, it's a real nice tool for, available to you. That will be available for another week because we are already involved in another election, the primary runoff election, which will be held next Tuesday, the 24th, at which time we will have to replace the homepage link. It will be, we'll keep the link up in a historical section, but not on the, not at the easiest place to find. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel?
Well, you have the podium, early voting for the Tuesday primary, I mean Tuesday runoff. What is, when is early voting?
Early voting for the primary runoff began yesterday. We are at the Patty Dodson Center for early voting through Friday. It is a one week, as the primary election code allows. Friday we'll be there seven to seven, but all the rest of the days this week will be there from eight to five. There are three items on the election ballot for the Republican Party, and there are one statewide and one local race for the Democratic Party.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, thank you, sir.
You get to sign that, and that concludes the canvas.
Okay, and we need to do, this is the certificate.
That is the canvas of the local elections, and then Scarlett will do the certificates of election for each newly elected council member, including you.
Okay. Scarlett, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Scarlett, who do you want to do first?
Do whoever, you're the mayor.
I'll start off.
(laughing).
(inaudible). State after me. I, Paul Palosik.
I, Paul Palosik.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the mayor.
Of the mayor.
For the city of Victoria.
The city of Victoria.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
(applause).
So now, I guess we can do District 5. Dr. Young.
Go by vote totals.
Here's your certificate. Right hand, repeat after me. I, Andrew Young.
I, Andrew Young.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
The office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Super District 5.
Super District 5.
For the city of Victoria.
For the city of Victoria.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Here's your certificate.
Great.
If you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Tom Halapaska.
I, Tom Halapaska.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
The office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Super District 5.
Super District 5.
For the city of Victoria.
For the city of Victoria.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Here's your certificate.
Great.
If you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Tom Halapaska.
I, Tom Halapaska.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
For the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
District Super 6.
District Super 6.
For the city of Victoria.
For the city of Victoria.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause).
And thank you, Mr. Matthews, for your excellent service you always provide. We appreciate it. I know these elections are done well with you over there, so thank you. Okay, items from council?
If I could pull D3.
D3. Okay. Any other items, council? Mr. Alvarez?
Mayor, I had one that I'd like to request for a future agenda, is a start of conversation about the, considering a charter review in the near future, or later this year, if there's any interest in that possibility.
It's, I think it's worth discussing. I know there's a couple of things that I've thought about, too, over the last year or two, so, let's talk about that. And Thomas?
Get it on the agenda for future discussion.
And may I suggest, too, if we're gonna, if there's a belief that we're gonna do one in 2017, we're not budgeting any money for an election, because it's an off-year, so we'll need to be, right now, there's no, as we're doing the preliminary budget, we're not budgeting, so the sooner we can make that decision, even though you might not know what you're gonna amend, it, but, that you're gonna move forward, that helps us with our budget preparation.
I don't think I have anything that would warrant paying for an election, but others might feel differently, so I don't know. We can, we can have that conversation, though. Okay, items from council, what else? I've got a couple. I just wanna, I've got some good feedback from citizens, specifically on the Parks Department, and Colby, and specifically regarding, I know VISD has a, for their special needs children, a fishing event Saturday, and, is it Saturday, Colby, or Friday?
Or Friday.
Don't come, I'm sorry, yeah, I don't want to make you walk all the way up, but they just conveyed that working with Parks and Rec was, was a very, a great experience, and you guys were very helpful. Also got a really nice compliment on Thomas here, helping someone out with a warrant, and really just took care of it very quickly, appreciate that. And this morning, we did a proclamation in Dealey on Plaza for its, and forgive me, law enforcement.
Peace Officer Memorial.
Peace Officer Memorial, forgive me for, for not getting that right, but the, the flag group was PD, did an outstanding job, was very proud to see you guys out there, so. I know none of them are here, but they just did a wonderful job, so. Okay, no other items from council?
Can we talk about Meadow Creek when Lynn does this presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, citizens' communication. We'll go ahead and open that up, and please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and try to limit your comments to within five minutes. Come on up to the podium, sir. Just a name and address for the record.
My name is James Soderholtz. I'm a Victoria County resident. I've heard about this thing I read in the paper today, and I'd like to voice some concerns, or I hope that the Water District, Water Board, and the city look at some more scientific research. It's my understanding that a plan to take our river water and pump it underground and call it storage, and I'd have to say, my knowledge of water, water doesn't just stay in the ground, it moves laterally underground, thus we have different aquifers. First, I guess I'd like to know what aquifer they're planning on pumping this water into, because as a county resident, I drink the water. Also, you know, the river water isn't the cleanest. Also, every city from here to San Antonio dumps their sewage in the river, even though it's treated. Heavy metals, antibiotics, and other toxins, even though we treat the water to a drinkable capacity, doesn't mean those things are removed. Or is the city going to treat the water to such a degree that all these things are removed? Because if not, then we're pumping toxins and antibiotics into our clean water, and we're gonna ruin our drinking water. Also, I think nothing has been addressed to water conservation. Maybe we need to look at teaching our schools and have bigger water conservation teachings, and teach people to limit or use water in a good fashion. Even when we were in the heaviest part of the drought two years ago, driving around the city, I saw people watering their lawns, putting water on the street in the middle of the drought. So we need enforcement, that would be another thing. I didn't make a list of things, but just, I saw this and left work early so I could come here and voice my concerns. The well in question in the, in the park, how old is this well? How long has that well been in service? What is the casing of that well? And how deep is it? So I think, I guess my point is, we need to look at many factors before we start pumping water into this aquifer. And I will, I know, gotta attend the meeting with the groundwater district, and I will voice my concerns on there. I know what I talked about, removing the antibiotics and heavy metals from water, I'd have to do some research, but I know I have read some articles on that, and there were some professors at UT, A&amp;M, and other colleges that are hydrologists, that had voiced concerns about the removal of these before we pumped them into an aquifer. Okay, that is all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you. And I, Mr. Soderholtz is how you say it, right?
Soderholtz.
Soderholtz, okay.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna talk about some of this in a minute, maybe get some of your questions answered, if not, Lynn Short right there is the guy. Lynn, hold your hand up. In front of you, over this way? Nope, this way.
Oh, okay. I'm looking.
So, just, just saying, if, in the future.
Okay, I was gonna say, and listen, but I knew through the citizen communication.
Right.
I had to voice my opinions and concerns.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Okay, citizens' communication still open?
Is it appropriate now for, I mean, is now the time for, if we're gonna pull D3, and there won't be public comment at that time, if anybody has, from here, from, from them, for D3, should they come up right now?
Yes, and that's a good point the councilman raises. If you want to talk about C1, which is.
D3.
D3.
D3 is in my perspective.
That was pulled the resolution?
No, no, that's cloud-based.
I'm sorry, no, no, I'm sorry, I was looking at E3, I'm sorry.
Okay. Are we all?
You said D3, correct?
Mm-hmm, D3.
C1 is one.
I'm used to having more.
For clarification, Dr. Young, we don't have any public, public hearings scheduled tonight, so if a member of the audience wants to speak on any topic, now is the time to do that.
It was my mistake.
No, I understand your point, though, yeah. By all means, under citizens' communication, everybody does need to get what they want to say out, so, good reminder. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm James Dodson. I reside at 410 North Vine Street in Victoria, and I am here to address C1 and urge you to support the budget amendment to allocate these funds for this project. I had the privilege of taking part in the first phase feasibility study on this project, and I'm very happy to see the city and the Water Development Board continuing to work together to move this forward. I think this next phase is very important, and the information it will collect, and that information's not only valuable to this proposed project within the city of Victoria, but also to other projects which may occur within the, the region. The Phase 1 feasibility study was a regional project. We looked at not just the city of Victoria's potential ASR, but ASR within other, several other locations in this area. So I, I think it's a, a good partnership between the city, the groundwater district, who's, was involved in the first phase as well, and the Texas Water Development Board, whose role is to encourage these innovative technologies so that we can make better use and manage more effectively the freshwater resources within the state of Texas. I see ASR as being one of the most promising opportunities to help to satisfy the future water needs and to drought-proof regions of Texas, so I, again, urge your passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Citizens' communication still open? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move into the rest of our agenda. I'll close citizens' communication. C1 is our first ordinance.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 City of Victoria Water Waste Water Fund budget to provide funding in the amount of $570,225 for the aquifer storage and recovery demonstration project, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
A move we adopt?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and I would like at this time, former Mayor Middleton is here, and he acts on our behalf in water matters and et cetera, so he'd like to discuss this with us.
Good afternoon, council and mayor, and staff. I, Charmel, I hope passed this out to y'all.
Yes, sir. They all have it.
Currently, the, the Texas Water Development Board has got the state 2017 draft mass, water, state water plan out for review, of which I've just taken a portion of the executive summary that, or the PowerPoint that goes along with it, for you to, to look at and, and pick up some of the highlights of, of the plan. And it's pretty self-explanatory, I'll go through them individually if you want me to, but at, at the end of this, I've prepared the information that was, that's being shown in the state water plan for Victoria County, and, that shows the projected needs of, of Victoria County in, in the future. The, the population growth of Texas with the figures that have come from the Development Board's planning staff show you the huge increase in population this state's gonna gain in, in the 50-year window between 2020 and 2070. Those areas of Texas that have planned well and have the resources to accommodate that growth is where the growth's gonna obviously take place. And you're gonna see the industrial growth as well. The things in Texas that are happening, as the Panama Canal starts to reach its completion on, on the huge widening project that's going on there in order to accommodate the supertankers and the super container ships, you know, Corpus Christi is already funded, the Texas already funded the, the increase of a, of a bridge over the, over the ship channel in Corpus Christi to the tune of over $1 billion for that one structure. Houston is in the process of widening and deepening their ship channel to accommodate those supertankers, obtaining the, you know, dredge areas and everything that goes along with it. Things are gonna happen on the Texas Gulf Coast, and because of, of that happening, that's gonna be a portion that drives this, along with technology and, and many other factors. But need to say, because of that growth, the demand for water, which they're certainly not making any more of, is gonna continue to increase, and, and, and then the municipal demand is, is one of the, is gonna, one of the largest growing numbers there. Agriculture's not gonna grow because we've, we think that the, for the farm and ranch operation is gonna be sustainable, it won't be for, for irrigated farming, though, because that land and that, those water rights will eventually be sold off, just because the price is so high, they can't afford not to. Even in, in the Habitat Conservation Plan that, that we're implementing in, in our region, we're paying the farmers not to farm already. We're paying them a bonus just to sign up for the program, and, and we have a trigger point based on aquifer level at a certain point in time of the year, when we either pull the trigger or don't pull the trigger, based on the weather forecast, whether we implement it. We've only had to implement it one year in the last three years that that program started, so it's been successful, and, and you're paying those farmers enough to where they can still make their payments on their farm, their equipment, and, you know, and do what they have to do, even though they're not gonna plant the same crop, crop they might have otherwise planted, corn primarily in that area, which does use the irrigated water. And it's allowed us to get through the last two or three years of drought, along with the ASR project that San Antonio had. They started a demonstration project that amounted to about a 20,000 acre-feet project. They, they knew where they're gonna get some of the water out, they just didn't know how much. The bubble they created, and for this man's, the water is treated to drinking, drinkable standards before it's put in the ground, it's just not straight out of the river. Okay?
The drinkable standards does not mean they remove all the bad stuff out of the well.
Well, it, they remove, we remove everything we can before we drink it as well, by treating it, and that's what we, it will be done before it's put back in the ground here as well. We're just using an existing well as the casing to go back into the ground with it, as I understand the, the, the program. But anyway, getting back to the, the ASR in San Antonio, that project grew, it proved to be successful, and has grown from the 20,000 acre-feet demonstration project to now the, and their ASR project has holding more than 80,000 acre-feet of water. And they're taking, they're kinda scalping the Edwards when times are plentiful and aquifer is high, they're putting water into that system on a continuous basis, 24/7. It's a dynamic system. It either runs one direction or the other, or they end up losing the bubble they've created. But the bubble is big enough to offset pumping during severe, severe drought times, to supplement San Antonio's water supply to the extent that they don't have to continue pumping out of the aquifer for pretty long periods of time. They need a little more infrastructure work to make that totally happen, but it's going to happen in the next four, five years. So, the ASR project, ASR project there has worked, and worked very, very well. And I encourage you to, to give consideration, positive consideration to the vote that you're about to take. But getting back to, to the needs of Victoria County, you see that, that even the city of Victoria, in, in the year 2070, is gonna have a shortage. This is the type of project where we don't have to have more water rights to do it with, we just have to use the water rights we have in, in a manner that's, in a management manner that effectively allows us to use that ASR if it proves through this demonstration project to be, to be successful, or to work, so to speak. So, I, I highly encourage you to look at this and, and let this project go forward so at least we know, one way or the other, what we're doing. And the amount of money that you'd be spending is, is incidental to, to the amount that if we don't have the water someday, it's gonna cost this city by not having it. Anyway, the, the information in the portion on Victoria County, pretty well, look, you can see it by, by every 10-year period, and, you know, things can happen within our community that change this, but, but as it stands right now, based on the growth rate we've had and population growth expectations for the future, these are the numbers that, that move forward. It, it'll take you a little time to digest it. I, I was gonna do this at a later presentation, but I saw you were gonna vote in, so I guess Sunday morning's paper, I saw that the vote was coming up tonight, so I decided to go ahead and move forward a little faster. Would've had a PowerPoint and some other things, but if there's anything in here you have questions about, if I can't answer it, I will certainly get the answer and get back to you. The entire state water plan is available over the internet, that address is, a web address is, is on one of those PowerPoints at the beginning of those slides from the Water Development Board.
Gary, how, how long is the San Antonio ASR? When did they start that? How long's it been operation?
It's been operational for probably about three and a half years, four years maybe, at the most.
Okay.
And they're doing it, they're not, in, in their case, they're not putting it back into the, into the Edwards Aquifer, they're putting it into Carrizo Aquifer, which is a sand aquifer that's south of San Antonio. Okay, but it's, it's still in Bear County. Okay? The Carrizo is, is a huge aquifer, covers a lot of area, but the portion of the Carrizo that they're putting it in is in the Edwards. And they made a deal with the Water Development Board, excuse me, with the groundwater management district as well, to be able to retrieve 100% of what they put in. So it, it didn't become a permitting issue, or they're not robbing from the other permit holders in, in the, in the water district.
I mean, from what I've read, it's been very successful for them.
Yeah, and, and they have most of the land leased over the top of the bubble where it exists, but as they continue to put more water into it, they're, they're pushing water out further laterally, and, and they know that there may be some, some other people that use a little of it, but it, it's not gonna affect the size of that bubble and that 80,000 acre-feet over time. You know, they can draw it down, but, you know, it, it will be supplemented at the same time they're drawing it down in some, some instances.
Mr. Middleton?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you just say that they're pulling the money, the money, the water out of the Edwards Aquifer, and yet they're replacing it out of the Carrizo?
Yes, ma'am.
Aquifer? So how is the water in the Edwards Aquifer being replenished? Because if you're pulling from this aquifer and you're putting it over here and returning it over this way, then how is this one getting replenished?
By, with rainfall. Recharge. There was natural recharge. In the Edwards Aquifer area, the annual average recharge is in excess of 500 million acre-feet a year.
Okay, so we're not leaving these people out without water?
No, well, it's being managed to where the aquifer level, there's, there's like five stages of cutback in the Edwards Aquifer within the San Antonio proper area. And as the aquifer continues to drop, they go into Stage 1, which are certain restrictions, reductions. Phase 2, Phase 3, Phase 4, even Phase 5. And, and so they, they manage based on the aquifer levels, and, and they've got monitoring wells in the western portion of, of the, the Edwards area out in Uvalde, and then there in San Antonio, they call the, the two wells that you look at are J17 and J27, you know, if, if you go to the Edwards website and look at them. The, those wells, the reporting data on those wells shows up every day. It's, 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 it's a interactive monitoring to where, as the well levels change, they change. Because the spring flow at San Marcos and Comal can be directly impacted, I mean, you could just watch, when, when the well level at J17 starts dropping, the, the, the CFS out of, out of San Marcos starts dropping immediately, and, and New Braunfels as well.
I guess the difference is that, that's one aquifer going to another aquifer, whereas here, we're proposing taking river water and putting it into an aquifer.
To, into an aquifer. But it's still treated water, okay?
I understand that. We're not taking directly from the river into the aquifer.
Right, correct.
But we, you know, again, the safeguards that I hope that we can implement is to ensure that we're not contaminating our aquifer with that treated river water, as opposed to what San Antonio is doing, is just exchanging one aquifer.
Well, the, for instance, the, the entire county is in a shallower alluvial aquifer that's mostly sandy gravel in most places, that's no more than 150 feet deep. We're fixing to put that water in, in the, Gulf Coast Aquifer, which is significantly deeper throughout the, the county. So it's not the same aquifer that the, that the ranchers and farmers are using for their cattle or their, or their homes, it's, it's a different aquifer.
It's much deeper. What did you say?
About 650.
650 feet?
Yeah.
Oh, give or take.
Yeah, it, it varies up to 1,000 feet in, in places, but anyway, that, again, we're not putting it, and water will percolate down, something dramatic would happen before it percolates up. It would defy gravity.
So we, and this may be a question for Lynn, how long have we been working on this project?
I'd like Lynn just to do a reminder of the whole project.
That'd be good.
And explain if, you know, if, if Mayor Middleton's willing to cede the floor for a second, Lynn, if you don't mind, would you just kinda do a refresher on what's happening?
Certainly. And I can't remember the exact dates when we did the, the regional study, but a couple of years ago, we participated with the groundwater district, La Vaca Navidad River Authority, Guadalupe Blanco River Authority, Port, the Port of Victoria, to do a, a regional study to look at whether or not this area was suitable for potential aquifer storage and recovery wellfield. We hired Integra Arcatus, Intera Arcatus, and Naismith Engineering to help us with that. They did an extensive study, and on paper, it shows that we are a good candidate for an aquifer storage and recovery program here. So, the next step then, what was recommended not only by them, but also by the state and the Water Development Board was, okay, now, you really should prove some of that up in, in a demonstration project. And so, that's where we are today. We have worked with the groundwater district to apply for a grant from the Texas Water Development Board to help fund a demonstration project that will allow us to take one of our wells in the city, put some treated surface water in the ground for a period of time, and then pull it back out. We'll be taking extensive water quality data throughout the entire process, we'll be taking, obviously, water well levels, not only at that well, but also at well 21, which is fairly near that location. And so, this is going to be a big gate, a two-year data gathering process that then we will use to make a decision on whether or not to move forward in the future with developing incrementally over time additional wells and, and storage facilities, to really give us another tool in our toolbox for addressing water needs, not only associated with drought, but also associated with just growth and, and water demand over time. You know, we currently have a surface water treatment plant over there that's capable of treating 25.2 million gallons per day. Now, in a peak summertime day, we will approach 19 million gallons per day as a peak day. But in the wintertime, it's a much lower rate that we treat, so it's typically, you know, average of about 10,000, up 10 million gallons per day, excuse me. So, roughly half the, half of our capacity is available, and so, if we can, and treat that water during those low flow periods, low demand periods, and store it, and then pull it out during those high demand periods, that's going to be a huge tool for us going forward in the future. Additionally, on the raw water side, we have about 27,000 acre feet of water, run of the right, run of the river water rights available to us. However, because of senior water rights downstream and also environmental flow restrictions, quite often, at least in the past few years during this drought we've, we've worked through, we're not always able during the summertime when our demand is high, to take all the water we need from the river at that time. So, again, if we can take it during these wet periods like we're experiencing now, treat it at a plant where we already have invested the capital dollars into to have that treatment capacity there, store that water, and then pull it out during the summertime, and possibly only have to redisinfect it before we send it back out. Again, I think that's going to be a great tool for moving forward. The water, as, as Mayor Middleton said, the water that will be put down hole will, is, meets all US EPA and, and TCEQ drinking water standards, it is drinking water, quality water. The groundwater in that aquifer down there is not without contaminants as it sits now either. It, it has its own set of contaminants. But here again, this is a demonstration project to help us gather data to, yes, sir?
One quick question. We hear a lot of controversy about the chlorinate, will the water be chlorinated when it goes down?
The water will have been disinfected before it goes down hole. And then when we take it back out, we, depending on the residual, how long it sits down there, we might have to redisinfect, it would be the only treatment process.
Seems like cer- certain times of year we switch that process?
For one month every year during the spring, we change from chloramination, which is a combination of chlorine and ammonia, to straight free chlorine. Free chlorine is a stronger disinfectant, but, but it's not recommended for surface waters on a long-term basis because of some of the byproducts it can create. But for one month a year, it's recommended by state regulatory agents that you switch just to
Flush the system.
Burn out and clean out the system, especially as you're preparing for high demand periods over the summer, warmer temperatures.
But we would be using the other?
We would be using chloramination.
That water that's treated, disinfected with chloran, what did you call it?
Chloramination, it's chlorine.
That will go into the aquifer? Okay.
Mr. Jalapesca.
One of the key things that we need to know is that on a surface reservoir, which is what we have presently, and we, of course, can expand that to about triple in size, that still doesn't give us what we're going to need for future needs. You can call this an experiment, or you can call it proving out what we think will work and know will work, engineering says it'll work, let's prove it out. But the key thing here, if we can do ASR, aquifer storage and recovery, we don't lose 90% to evaporation, and we don't take up huge acreage on top of the surface with reservoirs. Both those are quite lofty goals, I think.
And I would add that although ASR in San Antonio has not been very, a long, a very old project, ASR is, is not new to the nation and not even to Texas, El Paso's been on ASR for years and years. And I worked on putting the monitoring wells in for the ASR project in Curville in the very early 90s, right before I came here. And so, ASR has been successful in a number of locations.
The, the well that we're using, well 19, it, it's suitable, or we're going to have to do a lot of retrofitting and
We were planning on, we were, we were, we were planning on rehabbing that water well this year anyway, but that's the, part of the match that we're doing, proposing to be used for the Water Development Board grant, is money that we had in there to rehab that well. So, we were going to pull the pump out of there, replace the pump and motor, inspect all the other equipment, the drop pipe and everything, replace what needed to be replaced. We would inspect the screens, more than likely clean those screens, jet those screens. All of that will still be done as a portion of this project. The only difference will be, this water well is now, the finished product, will not only be designed to withdraw water from the aquifer, it'll also be a, a design to allow water to flow the other direction into.
And to be clear, we're talking about the Gulf Coast Aquifer.
Gulf Coast Aquifer, yes, sir.
Also determining its buffer zone in this, in this, with this demonstration project.
All of our wells are double screened at the Evangeline and Chico, aren't they?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Which is part of the Gulf Coast Aquifer. Those are just different layers of the Gulf Coast Aquifer.
This well's perfect. I mean, the only thing better if it was 20 feet away, but it's only a few hundred feet away, and you were scheduled to redo it, as you said, so it's perfect timing. I would just stress that we've been looking at this for three or more years, and it's been discussed in this chamber numerous times. And again, look at all the parties involved. There's a lot of people looking at this. Nobody wants it to go wrong. And I can tell you, I, up here on this group, I have been privy to sit with potential investors for this area. Investors with a B for a billion dollars, and the problem is water. And unless we secure this, you know, going forward, I mean, this is serious. I have to commend Mayor Middleton and those councils, they built that surface water treatment plant, and then, of course, you know, with Mr. Jalapesca and others, we've acquired these extra water rights. I think we're fortunate, we're in a really good position, but as you can see on this chart page, whatever, this, let me see, I don't know the page number, you know, if we plan now, we'll be set. So, I, I just think this is a perfect opportunity for that location and the timing and the partners, you know, Region L. You, you guys are very interested in this, obviously you're helping the Water Development Board, so this is a really good project. And I, I would say also, the, the end product is 15 years away, theoretically, right? I mean, assuming there's no major problems along the way.
In the next two years, you find out it's going to work, you'll be sitting in the, in the cat seat, you, you can put it on idle for, for a few years, and hopefully you don't even have to use it.
Right.
You know? It starts building, because it takes, it'll take time to get it to 5,000, or 6,000, or 8,000 acre feet of water stored.
Mm-hmm.
A long time. It doesn't happen in a few months.
And your Region L, well, even in your handout here, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have that page, it's the part about Victoria County, conservation is a big number in there in terms of what's expected.
Yeah.
We're going to have to do major conservation.
And as we move forward with, as a city, we're going to have to really look at some innovative programs in the future, such as through maybe even the, some of the federal money we, little money we get on replacing low flow with toilets, with low flow toilets and other things, other measures that have proven throughout the state and the region to save water. Because something, in other words, drive the, the number of gallons per household, per day, per household use down. Which, when you do that, it also affects the bottom line of the department. But as good stewards of a resource that's limited, we're going to have to go that direction in the future.
Sorry, Lynn, I mean, I know you want to sell water, but, no, I just, there's a lot of good information out there. We, we were given as a council that plan when we first did the initial study, I guess, I don't know if it's still online, but that's a good resource for people too. Okay.
I'd like to reiterate somewhat of what Paul said, if it hadn't been for you and others, started back before I was even here, and us trying to carry on what you guys started, and what we need to do in the future to be where we need to be, if we ever fall asleep at the wheel, wouldn't be a good thing to happen.
Counsel?
Almost since the beginning, I, I, and this is my, I guess, third or fourth, this is going on, we're starting the, the fourth state water plan since I've been on Region L. So, I've gone through almost 20 years, 17, 18, 19 years, something like that, I can't even remember what I got on that dead gum thing. Afraid to go look, I'll, I'll find out. It was in the late 90s, though.
Well, it's just the amount of planning is impressive, this state does, and then with their local regions and then the county, it, it's very well planned. I mean, it's, to me, it is, so. Okay, counsel, are there any further questions?
Well, I just want to encourage and want to thank Texas Water Development Board, that was one of the things I tried to emphasize early on, we could find some grant monies and want to congratulate the city for doing that. I hope as, as this demonstration proves itself out, which I'm pretty sure it will, in future planning, we may be able to find more dollars from the state that's going to help us take this initiative beyond, I guess, to the point where we hit, the scope is what we originally intended, so.
We can prove this out, the chances will go up.
Yes.
By proving this out, the chances that we can get additional state dollars increases.
Very good, I agree.
Well, and, and as well, if this, you know, we, we, I think y'all were doing an interconnect project this year on the, so two of the gravel pits, weren't you?
No.
It didn't happen?
That's a sore subject for one particular council member, sir.
Okay, well, as we move forward, that's something that needs to be done as well. Even if it's, even if it's, if it's just a pipeline connection.
Understood. You bet.
There's another bucket, a big bucket sitting over there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it, and, and again, I, I urge you to pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you for your continued service. Okay, counsel, anything, nothing further? We have a motion in second, plenty of good discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda.
There are three items remaining on the consent agenda that'll be approved by a single vote tonight. They are, first, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting from May 3, 2016. Second, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renew, a renewal of the debris response and recovery contract with Ashbrit Incorporated for the purpose of debris cleanup in the event of a disaster, and declaring an effective date. And third, a resolution awarding the 2015-16 gate valve and fire hydrant maintenance project to DMD Consultants Incorporated of Mocheim, Tennessee, for their low bid of $49,700, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project, and declaring an effective date.
Motion we approve D-1, 2, and 4.
Second. Motion in second, all those in favors?
I have a correction.
Correction?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
On page 1 of the D-1, unless we have praying mosquitoes.
I'm sorry.
You know what, you're talking about the minutes?
Yes, and the minutes.
Should have pulled that.
Well, I didn't realize it was on there.
What was the correction, I'm sorry?
The last paragraph, we have praying mosquitoes.
Praying? Instead of spraying?
Yes.
We were praying to get rid of them.
Yes.
Okay. You guys got that? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in second, right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. D-3.
Item D-3 is a resolution approving the purchase of microprize, excuse me, Microsoft enterprise licenses for cloud-based access to Microsoft Suite applications for use by city employees in the amount of $52,380, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel, let's get a motion first.
I move to adopt.
Second. Motion in second, questions?
Yes. What was that amount that we originally budgeted and approved for the exchange server versus this $52,000 for online?
Well, it was the exchange server and then also the licensing, and then also professional services, so really we hit it up close to 75,000, about 75,000. I'd have to look actually at that number, I can get that.
We had already approved it, right? So, this is a cost savings?
Yes, this is a cost savings.
Okay. Was that original budget line item for the additional 100 license?
No, sir.
No.
The, the licensing that, or the, what we had originally budgeted, budgeted for was just for, to upgrade our exchange licensing only.
Okay. But not the?
Not the additional. What had transpired after that, after speaking with our representatives from Microsoft and, and the vendor, they came up with this other solution, which was the online. Part of the caveat of that, as far as to get the enterprise level, is that we have to have at least a minimum of 25 users, which is classified as an E3, which is Office 365. And at that time, we were looking at, said, well, we had tested some of the, the software and came up with identified users who we considered to be the power users in Victoria, or City Victoria that use Office quite a bit, and so we decided that part in there is to go ahead and make their migration over to Office 365.
Okay. What's the implementation timeline on this?
So, we plan on, as soon as we order the licenses and get the licenses, we will implement that, and we're hoping that should be within a 60-day window.
So, everybody will be migrated for 60 days?
Migrated to Office, uh, Exchange Online.
Okay.
Correct. The Office 365, we'll soon, do that in phases as the departments feel comfortable with our training. So, we'll need to get them trained online to be, to be ready for that. But that should be within, I would say, a 90-day window.
I, I just want some clarification, because you said everybody, and I thought in this report, this was sort of one of several phases, so I want to make sure we're all talking about the same everybody's.
The same everybody is the Exchange Online, which is considered, is all of the budgeted positions with the City of Victoria, 631 positions will be, will be migrated to Exchange Online.
Thank you. You can tell I'm only partially following where you went.
Right. Of those 631, 100 will be issued out, Office 365 licenses, and then when the, the future is that we will then need to look at replacing out the, the existing Office licenses for her remaining users.
Okay. And I got a little heartburn with software, as you know, right now.
Yes, sir.
So, are you confident that we're going to get this done even though we haven't finished the last software migration and update from, that was budgeted three years ago?
You're talking, well, I think, are you talking about the development services deal? Yeah, I mean, hopefully we'll have a demonstration by the end of June on that, they're doing final testing on that, for the, for the public side of it, the access for the public. It's being, it's being used internally now, so.
So.
I think this is a little bit different than that software that we, going into that new software for the development services in.
But that's just my opinion.
And you'd be, but yeah, this upgrade for Microsoft ought to be relatively seamless.
Really, all we're looking at is that the biggest hurdle, of course, is migrating the, the email accounts across there, but that is sort of a, a thing that you don't have where you're going across different platforms. We're on Exchange environment, so we're just moving it to an Exchange, a newer version of Exchange. So, that issue of migration, migrating the data versus what we were having the previous ones, was a little bit different, so, yes, I do feel comfortable that we will.
Okay. So, 60 days and 90 days?
He said
When we, when we start the, the actual project, we've got to get the, we have to issue out the licenses.
Yes.
We get the licenses, then we'll go and schedule that with our contractor to begin that work, so.
And I think your 90-day estimate too, you, he had a caveat there, Councilman Bautnike, that the departments will implement those as they feel comfortable that their employees have been trained on the other before they move to that. So, that, a lot of that is going to depend on those departments getting their employees trained before they move to that.
We have a training goal, then.
We, we are currently looking right now We are currently looking right now, as far as implementing some training and sort of either weighing the options as far as if we're gonna do classroom training, or if we're gonna try to let them do online training at their, at their time, at their desk.
So, I would imagine, I would, I would set, you know, deadline, everybody needs to be trained by this date, and we're gonna migrate, otherwise, people that don't feel comfortable...
I'll be glad to take that up with Mr. Foot, Mr. Bultnott.
Okay.
Thank you. I mean, that's my job.
You'll work it out.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll work on it. I appreciate it, and I understand where you're going.
I would think you'd be excited at this. I wouldn't want to run an exchange server. I know at my office, although it's only fifteen accounts, it's flawless. This is, I'm just saying, that's...
I heartily agree, and the exchange version that we have, 2003, is...
Yeah, yeah.
It needs to, it needs to happen. It surely needs to happen.
I would only offer that, I mean, with respect to Councilman's question about the other software, it's two different situations, and I hope this will go very smooth for you, so. And you're saving money.
I'm saving money, and I'm also, yes, the big thing is, yes, I hope it goes smooth, too. We have done this before onsite, migration to an upgrade, and that was a very painful, long weekend, to recover a lot of mailboxes, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, good discussion. Any further questions or anything? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, that's D3. Resolutions.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Harrison, Waldrop, and Uheric LLP to perform the city's annual audit for the year ending September 30th, 2016, in an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand dollars, and declaring an effective date.
Second. The motion in second, discussion. Andrew, did you?
Yeah, Mayor, if you'll allow me, real quick, we placed in front of you the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending 9/30/15 tonight. I know you, you know, you're just getting it, but I've asked Steve Van Manham with Harrison, Waldrop, and Uheric, they assist the city in performing the audit. He's gonna come up, just kind of give you a real quick overview of the report, kind of show you a few highlights of where to look, and get a lot of the detail on it, so. Steve, you wanna come on up?
Okay, Andrew, Mayor, members of council, the document that you have in front of you, the title of this, I think, is very significant. It's a comprehensive annual financial report. Now, the term comprehensive is really fitting. This document, two-thirds of the disclosure in this document is voluntary information that the city goes over and above what's required from governmental accounting standards. I mean, there's two hundred and thirty-eight pages in this report, and really, the required information stops in about page eighty. So, the city has elected to provide a significant amount of additional information over and above what the requirements are. There's four sections of the report. The introductory section, now, this contains the letter of transmittal from the city, it's signed by the finance director and the city manager, has just a narrative about some of the financial activity that occurred last year. It has the chart, excuse me, the principal city officials, it has the organizational chart, and also has a copy of the award that the city received on its September 30th, 2014 report. It's a award that's titled the Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting. Now, this is a award that's given out by the Government Finance Officers Association, and I think this is, the 2014 report was the thirty-second consecutive year that the city has received this award. The next section of the report is the financial section. Now, this starts with the auditor's opinion. This is a letter on our firm's letterhead, and the summation of the opinion is that these financial statements are fairly presented. That's what's called the clean opinion. You know, from a CPA's perspective, we cannot give the council any greater assurance than this form of opinion that these financial statements are accurate. There is a new paragraph in the auditor's opinion this year, it's called emphasis of a matter. In the 2015 fiscal year, all the governmental entities in the United States were required to bring their pension liability onto the face of their financial statements. Now, this is information that's always been disclosed in the footnotes, but for the 2015 fiscal year, this unfunded pension liability comes onto the face of the financial statements. Now, that affected the city's statement of net position about thirty-five million dollars. Sounds like a big number, and it is, but this is not something that is going to be paid out in the next fifteen years. Now, this is a liability that gets amortized for many years. The city is paying currently everything that they're required to pay into TMRS, but actuarially, we're at a unfunded position, and the valuation date used in this report was December 31st, 2014. And there's a new footnote, a lot of information regarding the pension liability. There's a section titled Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is in the front of the financial section. This section of the report is just a, probably a twelve-page section, it's a narrative of the financial activity that occurred last year. The first page of the MDNA, there's some financial highlights, these are very significant. There's six bullets on the first page of the MDNA. And one of the most important is bullet number five, where it talks about the increase in the net position of the city for the 2015 fiscal year, a little over 3.2 million. Yes, ma'am?
I know we all just got this, but I lost you, I can't find where you are.
Page four.
Okay, go to the financial section tab. Okay, the first thing is the auditor's opinion.
Okay.
Following that is the Management's Discussion and Analysis, and that starts on page four.
That's where I was, thank you.
Okay. Well, as mentioned, that fifth, under the financial highlights on page four, that fifth bullet, the increase in the city's net position for the 2015 fiscal year, three million two oh nine, excuse me, three million nine oh two, I transpose that, three million nine hundred and two thousand. Now, the users of your financial report, other than the city council, primary users are bond rating agencies. They look at these things, and the MDNA is the section of the report that they like. They don't have to go through two hundred and thirty-eight pages of this report to find out, did the financial condition of the city improve or decline from the prior fiscal year? And that answer is that bullet number five, an increase in your net position indicates that your financial condition improved from the prior fiscal year. Now, there is some more detail, and if further you go back in the report, the more detailed the information is. Basic financial statements follow the MDNA, that starts on page 21. Financial statements go through page...
Steve, just a second.
Steve, could you go back to page four and emphasize bullet six? That seems to be also an issue in the community.
The first sentence, please.
Yeah.
The sixth bullet.
Could you state that first sentence?
Oh, the city's outstanding long-term debt had a net decrease of ten million dollars.
Thank you.
And there is a schedule in the footnotes that breaks down the debt by type, general obligation debt, the certificates of obligation, you've got the pension liability, you've got accrued compensated absences, et cetera. So, there is a detailed schedule in this document that gives you that breakdown of that ten million decrease.
I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Oh, that's okay. If you have any questions, please stop me at any time. Starting on page forty-four are the notes to the financial statement. I know I'm going very quickly, I'd certainly appreciate council's review of this document after tonight, and certainly invite me back at a future meeting. I certainly don't expect there to be many questions, you know, y'all just received this for the first time tonight, but please review this document, and I'd certainly be willing to come back at a future council meeting and entertain any questions. But the footnotes start on page forty-four and run through page eighty. Now, that one schedule that I referred to regarding the changes in the debt, that's on page seventy. And the debt is broken down between governmental activities and business-type activities. Governmental activities is the general fund, all your special revenue funds, debt service fund, and capital project funds. The business-type are just the utility funds, environmental services, 700 main, community center, et cetera. So, there's two different types of activities broken out on page seventy. The third section of the report is the statistical section. Now, this is a part of the report that I, you can find some really good information. I mean, this shows the different revenue sources and expenditures by categories for the last ten fiscal years. So, you want to look at some trends, you know, where we were ten years ago compared to today, the statistical section can give you a lot of information. And the fourth section of the report is what's titled the single audit section. The city receives federal funds for different projects. Once those federal funds exceed a specific threshold, then your auditor is required to come in and not only test whether the financial statements are accurate, but whether the city complied with the various rules and regulations that, you know, follow the federal monies. I mean, when you get federal funds, you know, there's lots of strings attached. And so, the single audit section is our testing of those programs to determine whether all the requirements were met. Again, there weren't any issues in terms of compliance areas or problems with internal control regarding those federal programs. Last thing I just want to touch on is the general fund, the budget comparison. There's a schedule in here that has both a very summarized report and a detailed, and no single department for the general fund was in excess of their budget for the 2015 fiscal year. All departments were within their budgetary limits, as amended. I'm gonna stop there, unless you have some questions, I'll continue, or please feel free to invite me back at a future meeting.
Okay, counsel? Lots of good information.
Would this be on the website?
Yes.
Steve, do you, do you, your firm audit a lot of cities, municipalities?
We do a few.
Number? How do we stack up?
In, well, you know, y'all are the biggest city that we audit.
Okay.
In terms of, like, working with the finance office, certainly, y'all have one of the most qualified, you know, in terms of their expertise and what they do. You know, your operations also are very sophisticated in regards to the software that y'all use, it's, y'all are fairly advanced.
Okay, very good. Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions, or?
I had one in the statistical section, just looking at the, from 2006 to 2015, it's page 188, 189, the net position, and from 2014 to 2015, is this what you're pointing out because of the OPED?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It's about a thirty-five million dollar reduction as a result of the implementation of the pension liability reporting.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all, and again, I certainly want to appreciate the work of the staff, you know, they certainly make our job as auditor a lot easier. We do appreciate the work, and look forward to visiting with y'all again in the future.
Just want to add one caveat about the pension liability. Even though it's required, we did take a thirty-five thousand dollar liability on our books, but keep in mind that we're close to eighty percent funded in our TMRS. And it's not many cities that are a hundred percent funded, I can name you a couple, one or two, but that's about it, but I think being eighty percent funded is a pretty outstanding job, compared to some other states.
Very good. Well, since they do such a good job, I was gonna see if we could get a discount, but I probably shouldn't bring that up here, so, she'll kick me. Sorry, I had to do that, Steve. Very good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. E2?
Item E2 is a resolution granting a variance to Section 21-82A1 and Section 21-82A2 of the Victoria City Code related to subdivision and development, which requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 50 feet for an original town site, RESE division number 81, owned by Melissa A. Garrett, and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E2?
Second.
Motion in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. E3?
Item E3 is a resolution granting a variance to Section 21-92 of the Victoria City Code related to subdivision and development, which requires a property to have ninety-seven off-street parking spaces for Trinity Episcopal Church, and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E3?
Second.
The motion is second, are there any questions?
Um, I just had one. Do we have any idea on the timeline for their improvements, like how long that modular building will be there?
No, so, we did not get a specific timeline. It's a multi-phase project, it's all dependent on fundraising.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
I had a question, just for clarification. Once this variance is granted, this is pretty much the end of, in other words, when they get the project completed and when they move that temporary building off, they don't have to come back for any other types of variances or approvals, assuming the project is built the way we expect.
That's correct.
Somebody asked me that, and I just wanted to clarify it.
This variance continues throughout the remainder of their phases, so they'll still be under parts when this building goes away and they get their first phase done. That's the way we structured this, isn't that correct?
Yes, that master plan that was included in the packet is actually an attachment to the resolution, so as long as they follow the master plan through all of their building improvements, then they would not need to apply for another variance.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we'd be doing this three more times.
Well, in the end, they're saying that the underparking will be twenty-one spaces in the resolution.
It gets better, yes, sir.
It gets a little bit better.
At the end of the entire project, it's better than it is today.
It wasn't anticipated.
Very good. Be a nice addition over there. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Item E4 is a resolution accepting a three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred dollar grant from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs Home Program for the Homeowner Rehabilitation Assistance Program, and the Single Family Program for Persons with Disabilities, authorizing the city manager to execute all related documents, and declaring an effective date.
I move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you.
Item E5 is a resolution approving a reimbursement not to exceed 261,288 dollars to Renovar Energy Corporation for improvements to the landfill gas collection system at the Victoria landfill, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for this reimbursement, and declaring an effective date. Mayor and council, before we jump into a motion for this, I believe Mr. Lesec is going to propose an amendment to this resolution that's going to reduce the dollar figure.
Yes, I would propose that we reduce the dollar amount to 236,826 dollars and sixty cents, from 261 to 88.
Well, I'm happy to make that motion.
Well, second, and why?
We have been able to do some more negotiations with Renovar to get them to cover some more of the cost of the expansion of the gas system.
Right, show those costs to them.
But we need a motion first, then we need to amend it.
I thought that was the motion.
That was the motion.
We gotta amend it.
You made a motion to amend, we don't have a motion on the floor yet, so let's back up.
Make a motion to adopt, E5.
Second.
Our motion is second?
All right.
Motion to amend?
Is it a motion to amend to change?
Well, you said before we make the motion, he was gonna talk to us, so...
Yes.
He was just giving us a language.
Okay, I move that we amend E5 to change the number from 261,288 dollars to 236,826 dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
And that occurs at three locations within the resolution, so that motion covers all three locations within the resolution.
Okay.
Okay. We start getting the sixteen wells, the nine that we're going to do, and then the additional seven?
Yes, ma'am, and all have to be done. They actually have to do their wells before we start ours. So, it will be done by the same company, in the same general time period, but they will start their wells, complete their wells first, and then begin ours.
Okay. So, the seven are gonna be new wells?
Actually, all of them will be new wells. This, actually, all of them will be new wells. Some of the wells that we're replacing have been watered in and then cramped in a way that we can't get good gas and we can't get a pump down there. Some of them have silted in, and, and the wells that we're drilling are in a very old part of the landfill. And those wells have been in there for years and years and years, and so we're having trouble getting gas out of them. It's needed to drill the new wells in order to get a higher level of production as well as a better, higher level of methane gas out of there that we can sell.
But did I understand for the, this nine wells, the first original nine wells, are they going to be built like parallel to each other?
No, ma'am, they're going to be built close to other wells that are no longer serviceable. So if we've got two bad wells in an area, we're going to put one in the middle and draw from both locations, or depending on where that well is and the problem that we may be having, we may drill within a few feet of it, right beside it. Right, we do have, Gilbert reminded me, and, and it's on the CM one, but we have to be very careful not to, right now, we're not in any kind of compliance issue, but this will also help us maintain compliance, because if we can't get vacuum from certain areas of the landfill because that well's watered in, we end up with migration issues. And so we're starting to see it kind of teeter that way in some of those spots. Once these wells are drilled, we have total control now over the landfill system, over the gas system, and water as well.
Can we see a revenue stream here anytime soon?
Will we start collecting money? It's been about, over the past two years, we got about $75,000. And we expected a higher volume, because as you well know, the gas prices went kind of south. So hopefully with this type of improvements, we increase our volume in gas, and as you well know, this gas price starts creeping up, so we seems to have a positive, a bigger positive return future. I expect this investment to be paid back in 5.6, no, 5.3 years, so.
5.3.
So I think it's a good, we'll get our money back within five years at the relative level, you know, so, yeah, so.
We have one buy, one customer or multiple customers?
Right now, there's one customer that Renovar's supplying gas to.
That's Neos Nitro.
That could, that's a long-term contract? We don't, we don't know.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
Daryl, how, how long do these wells last?
We've got wells that are in the ground now that are 15, 18 years old, that go way back into when we started, just, well, not when we started the landfill, but the early 90s.
One thing to keep in mind when we, back then, when we put these wells in, we didn't have any thought in the future that we were going to be in the methane gas business, so some of these wells was not to the par that we wanted to back then. If we knew that, we'd have done a different job back then. Back then, our requirement is just to be compliant at a minimal level of T C Q. This is beyond that level, because we want to generate gas, good gas to sell to as well.
Very good. So we have a motion to amend we need to vote on first. Everybody understands what that is? So all in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that is passed, now we need to vote on the item itself. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. E six?
E six is a resolution finding that the A E P Texas Central Company's application for approval of a distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring the notice of this resolution to the company and to the legal counsel, and declaring an effective date.
Second. We have a motion and a second, are there any questions?
Yes.
Question?
The $54 million that it's talking about, is it for the whole region that it's, it's not just us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
$2 is something.
Yes, I saw that, but, and the city's reasonable rate case expense shall be reimbursed by the company.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it talking about when we are paying for the defense on this thing, or for the?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's the legal expenses related to the challenge of this.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I said, well, better check, maybe we have some more expenses in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, one more question. The 2.90, was that per, per household, the increase in electricity, or is that per kilowatt?
The $2.90.
I believe the $2.90 per household.
For a thousand kilowatts.
Right, for 1,000 kilowatts, okay.
Very last sentence of that letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, the very last sentence.
I don't think we've ever not filed or put in opposition, right?
It's, this has been a traditional part of the process. The company files for a rate increase, we challenge them, and then we tend to work out a resolution with the company that winds up being a settlement that, that allows the company to make a reasonable cost recovery, but it's typically a lower level than they initially proposed.
So then we would probably see this coming back to show that, you know, we've come to an agreement that this is how much the rate's going to be increased by?
Yes, ma'am.
It's kind of a good checks and balance, so, because sometimes I wonder, I don't think they're, they're not trying to cheat anybody, but they're a good company and they serve our customers, but it's checks and balance. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you.
Item E seven is a resolution awarding the bid for the F Y, fiscal year 2015-16 asbestos abatement project related to the community center remodel project for Frontier Development Incorporated for their low bid of $34,390, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second. Okay, motion and a second, are there any questions? This, this is all the floor in the?
For the abatement, the asbestos abatement.
Okay. Very good, a lot of good bids.
I was going to say.
Very competitive.
Substantial amount of bids.
Closest one, just getting it, that's good. Okay, all those, no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you.
Item E eight is a resolution awarding the bid for the fiscal year 2015-16 community center remodel project to A and A Constructors Incorporated for their low bid of $490,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Second. We have a motion and a second?
We've got a couple of questions.
Okay, discussion?
They're not related, okay? We're not related. Alvarez.
Oh.
Oh. Alvarez Construction, right. Okay.
They won't adopt me.
Mr. Bocknight?
I can understand.
The budget amount, it talks about in architectural fees, the budgeted project includes payment for professional services. Is that already included in the 490?
Yes, that is already included.
So A and A's carrying that in their bid?
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, I think that is separate. I think it is separate.
That, that contract was awarded previously to Raleigh McCoy, and so that, in our total dollar figure that is budgeted, we do have that figured, but that is not in this, this bid here. This is, this is, Raleigh McCoy has finished portions of that project, we've gone out for bid, and so that was covered in the budget, but not in this dollar figure that you're approving tonight.
Okay.
Sorry, I was a little confused about that question.
That's okay. He started before then, yeah. All right, is there any other questions?
No.
Okay, seeing no further questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Item E nine is a resolution granting variances to section 10-115 and 13-27 of the Victoria City Code, which prohibit a person from installing a septic tank within one mile of an existing city sewer service, main to parcel 65-314 W A Woods to Kiran Subdivision T nine, part of a 26.931 acre tract located at 255 Skytop Road, Victoria, Texas, owned by Commercial Metals Company, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion is second? Counsel?
Yeah, I had a question. It says the county previously had allowed them to discharge into the regional airport sewer system.
Right.
Using their own lift station. It doesn't say why the county decided to not do that. Do you have any insight that's not here?
I do not, counsel, but other than I know that the, the airport, as you know, are redoing a lot of their utilities out there, and I understand that they had advised Commercial Metals that they were no longer going to let them pump into them. I'm assuming the airport had some contractual agreement with Commercial Metals for, for some time, because historically, that's what they had done, Commercial Metals pumped across Business 59 to a lift station that the airport owned, and then into the, the big lift station from the airport that feeds into our, and of course, we build the airport itself for the effluent, not only from the airport, but also at the time of Commercial Metals. I'm assuming they had a contractual agreement, and that is expired now, and so.
I believe they would be charging for cost of services, I was just wondering why they just cut them off, rather sudden.
I do not know the answer to that.
Have no special insight? Okay.
It's a good question, because I thought about it when I read this, too. I don't, hmm.
Airport gets their water from?
Us.
From us.
It's one of our biggest.
Big stick?
Oh. That's not her.
Do we need to look at the rates on 16 inch lines? We only have one that goes to the airport.
Yeah, that's the biggest valve, yeah.
I think we ought to look at the rates across the board, but it's a different story.
If, if I read this correctly, the, the problem then became that they couldn't get access to the, the city's taps through other directions, so basically, that sort of cut us off from, I mean, it leaves us with the septic system out there. It cut us off from having access further out for our septic system.
That's correct. We cannot serve them by gravity sewer. Their, their elevation and grades of the sewer lines are not, won't allow that, and so the alternative would be to, for them then to pump into our system, which is, that's what they had done previously to the airport system, was pump. But in order to get to our system, they would have had to lay the privately-owned force main either in text-out right-of-way or in, partially in county right-of-way and partially across private property. Text-out won't allow them to have a privately-owned force main in, in their right-of-way, because they reserve that for publicly-owned utilities. And when they, when Commercial Metals, the county said they would allow them to put the force main in, in their right-of-way, but they were unable to obtain private easement from landowners to, to close the gap there and complete that transmission main. So basically, at this point, this is really their, their option, is to install a septic system.
So when this property was proposed to be annexed in previous meetings, the city would have been responsible for the lift station?
We could, we could accept ownership of a force main.
But in previous council, we, this had come up to be one of the properties to be annexed, and we would have been required to take sewer out to it.
Wow, I do not recall exactly what means we were planning on serving that particular piece of property with, I just don't remember, but we would have been, we would have been provided, we would have been required to provide service.
But it doesn't gravity feed to there?
It doesn't gravity feed. We, we, the service still could have been with a privately-owned lift station and a publicly-owned force main, and that's still an option. However, typically, if, if we're going to own a force main, we're going to want it designed to city standards, it's going to be a much larger and much more expensive force main than a typical privately-owned, and, and probably much larger than it really is needed to serve that facility.
How many gallons are of effluent per day?
I do not know the answer to that. As I understand, this is primarily domestic wastewater, though, it's not processed water.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Thank you.
E ten is a resolution awarding the Guy Grant Road sanitary sewer line replacement project from Navarro Street to Salem Road to Palacios Marine and Industrial Coatings Incorporated for their low bid of $384,837.07, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second. Motion is second, due discussion?
I had one question. Since that one section of Guy Grant that, that they have to replace is that newer concrete road?
Yes, that, the, and this vicinity map is not exactly accurate, the, the actual, the scope of work for this project actually starts, I mean, stops on the downstream side of Salem Road. It doesn't, this shows a little, a tail going on, further on down Guy Grant towards Mockingbird, but that is, is not true. But yes, this, this, the majority of this pipeline is underneath a concrete portion of Guy Grant. Now, the majority of this pipeline's being replaced using trenchless technology, so most of it, all, really all except for, I believe, a 30-foot open-cut area is being replaced with either, it's either pipe bursting and some slip lining.
Okay.
So it is being done, and, and I had the same thought, and I looked today to see how long ago it was since we rebuilt that road, and that's been 16 years, and so I, I think of it as being real new, too, but it's been, it's been longer than I thought. And I do recall at the time, however, we did video that line, and, and at the time, we made the decision that, okay, it's still good enough, it's got more life in it, and we can replace it using trenchless technology. So we've got another 16 years of life.
Okay.
Does that mean you're not going to break concrete?
We're going to break only a.
30-foot?
30, 30-foot area.
Yeah, I was looking at the 50 square yards, and I, I was wondering how they were going to do it, so.
I'd like to see the equipment that does a 24-inch line pipe burst, that's interesting.
Come by this summer and you can see it.
I might want to do that.
We're going to try to get that done during the time that school's out for summer because of Chandler Elementary there.
Very good, okay. Very good. Okay, any further discussion?
And, I'm sorry, you said it doesn't go down Guy Grant?
The asphalt part?
It doesn't go down past Salem, it's just to the other side of Salem and stops, for now. Now, I will tell you that eventually, probably in the not-too-distant future, I'm going to be looking to try to work that into C I P sometime, because the remainder of that line's going to, it's going to follow suit. It's going to need to be replaced at some point.
In what direction?
Down towards Mockingbird.
Okay, thank you.
We'll fill in that big ditch then, too.
That's what I was going to ask, too.
I'm sorry, it's a different project.
You're going to have to find a lot of money.
I know. We'll see.
Well, we're coming up to budget time, Sean.
Yeah, okay. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Thank you. All right, city manager reports?
Yes, we have two, and Lynn's the first one, and what, with the questions recently on Metta Creek and maintenance programs versus rebuild, Lynn, I've asked Lynn to do a refresher course on what the difference is, and so hopefully, this will help clarify. And, you know, just, one of the comments I made to the mayor and probably made to some others is, you know, for the first time ever, we have a very consistent maintenance program. This community's not used to having a very proactive maintenance program, but over the last two years, we've started that, so I think part of the public's, you know, issues are they don't quite understand what we're doing from a maintenance versus a rebuild, so hopefully, we'll continue the educational process, so, thanks, Lynn.
Certainly. So if y'all will recall, in 2013, staff developed a residential street improvement plan, and we brought it before you in early 2014, and that plan really established a multi-strategy approach to trying to address our aging roadway system, especially our aging residential roadway system. And those, they basically set up a triage for our, for our roadways. It said, okay, for, we're going to split them into three categories, the, the really good ones, that we're going to try to do a preventive maintenance program on, the bad ones, we're going to reconstruct, and we actually broke the reconstruction into two different groups, those being, having, those with, street segments with good utilities under them, and those bad streets with bad utilities under them. And the plan, so the plan then became, if, if we had a street segment that had a street rating greater than or equal to 85, it was a candidate for preventive maintenance. If it was a street segment that had a street rating less than 85, it was, needed to be reconstructed. And then we further broke that into two sections, because we don't want to build new streets And then we further broke that into two sections, because we don't want to build new streets over bad utilities. And we don't currently have revenue bond capacity to address those pipes under some of those roadways. And so we said, okay, the streets, the bad streets with good utilities, we're going to work on now, between now and 2021. And then in 2021, as we start retiring debt on a pretty dramatic scale on revenue bonds, we will then be able to issue more bonds, address the pipes underneath those other streets, and then come in and do the roadwork. So that's how, how the plan works. I want to talk just a little bit about reconstruction versus preventive maintenance. And of course, reconstruction is reserved for those streets that are beyond what a preventive maintenance program can do. And they've deteriorated to the point where they need to be completely restruct, reconstructed. In Victoria, based on a street standard that was adopted in 2014 after the, this plan came out, this is what the anatomy of a reconstructed street segment looks like. You can see at the very bottom level, the existing soils. It's what we call the subgrade. Sometimes it is stabilized with either lime, flash, or cement in order to make it very strong. Sometimes it's just compacted, depending on the testing of that soil, what that soil requires. Directly above that is a GeoGrid, which is basically a plastic mesh material that's, that's put over the existing soil before you build the road on it to provide extra structural stability for that roadway. Then you've got aggregate base course. That is now eight inches of crushed limestone base. The next layer shown there is an asphalt pavement base course. Basically, that is a seal coat. It's a bond breaker between the final riding surface and the limestone base. And then the final riding surface is an inch and a half or two inches of hot mixed asphaltic concrete surface course.
Lynn, go back to that previous slide.
Yes, ma'am.
That asphalt pavement base course.
Yes.
Is that what I sometimes call the goop and gravel?
Yes, that is seal coat.
Seal coat?
It's a single seal coat, though, instead of a double seal coat.
Thank you.
Is that right? Are we doing a double, Ken, in between them now? I can't remember. Oh, it is a, a single?
On the hot mix?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a single.
Single, okay, I was right.
And, you know.
If it's going to be covered.
Right now, if you'll drive through Castle Hills, the portion that is under construction, that's, that's the phase we're at right now.
That's correct.
It has not, the hot mix is not on top of it. So if you have time to drive through that, you can kind of see what Lynn's talking about.
That has been sealed, and it's awaiting hot mix. You're absolutely correct. Here's a picture of hot mix. This is a, hot mix is a manufactured product. It's, it's made or processed in a hot mix plant. And it is basically a mixture of sand, aggregate, and oil or asphalt to create a product that then can be applied to a roadway in an inch and a half or a two-inch thick lift using a laydown machine like you see here. And the result is a very smooth riding surface. The cost to reconstruct the street, as we've talked, as I've mentioned here, without any concrete work, does not include curb and gutter, sidewalks, driveways, handicap ramps, just, no utilities, just the roadway itself. The cost is about forty-two dollars per square foot, which equates to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars per lane mile, since most of our residential streets are two-lane roads. You can say six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars a run-in mile, about, just for the roadway reconstruction. That is the process we are using in Castle Hills as we speak. By contrast, preventive maintenance is a, is a very different, very different process. It is a pavement management strategy designed to preserve the street and retard its deterioration over time. It is typically applied to structurally sound pavements in good condition that have significant remaining service life on them. In most cases, as well as here in Victoria, preventive maintenance consists of crack sealing and/or seal coating. Typically, we would recommend doing a crack seal on a roadway every two to three years and a seal coat every seven years. Again, it's applied to good streets to keep them in good condition. Typically applied directly, a seal coat is typically applied directly over an existing asphalt surface. Now, it doesn't have to be, but that's how it's typically applied. And that's how we're applying it in Mayfair and Mayfair Terrace, we will be soon. The project was, was let recently. We do have a signed contract now, so I believe that work will, will start soon. This is a graphic, this is from the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. But I think it's a good graphic, and it shows what happens to pavement with and without preventive maintenance. And you can see, you start out with a good street, and over time, without preventive maintenance, its, its quality falls off dramatically after a short period of time. However, with preventive maintenance, at several intervals, there are seven-year intervals, you can see that out there at the end of that same time period, the pavement now is still up in the fair to good condition versus the very poor, as it would be without any preventive maintenance. Now, the pavement condition still declines. If you look up there at the preventive maintenance, it's still declining. However, it's declining at a much slower rate. And so eventually, it still will be a candidate for reconstruction. However, hopefully, we've extended its life by applying preventive maintenance. The seal coat process is basically putting down a layer of oil or emulsion on the roadway, hot liquid asphalt, and then coming back over the top of it with some aggregate, some typically coated rock aggregate. Here in Victoria, we use what we call a double chip seal or a double seal coat, so it's two passes. A pass of oil, pass of rock, come back over the top of it with another pass of oil, and then another pass of rock. Now, I said earlier that it's typically applied as a preventive measure over existing asphalt surfaces, but it doesn't have to be. There are many roadways in Victoria that were built as a double seal coat roadway only. Meadow Creek is one of them. Meadow Creek has never had hot mix on it. It has, it was constructed as a seal coat roadway. I live in Highland Hills, too. The streets in my neighborhood are a double seal coat roadway. It's never had a hot mix on it. Riverside Park, all the roadways in, I'm sorry?
Continue.
All the roadways in Riverside Park are double seal coat roadways. And they're, that was the standard for many, many years, a long time ago.
That's my question. That was the standard?
That was the standard. It is no longer the standard for reconstruction.
Okay.
Here is the anatomy of a two-course seal coat street. You, you see the same base section, basis section down there. Typically, however, because these streets are older, we weren't using limestone at the side, at the time. It's typically a gravel base from local pits around here that was used.
What was the depth of that base in those days?
It varies on subdivision and when it was constructed. And then on top of that, you have a prime coat, which is basically an oil that's applied to the top of that to basically provide a tack for everything else to stick to. Then you've got your first course of hot liquid asphalt, followed by a course of aggregate, and then your second seal coat course, right on top of it. You'll see down there that the, I say cement stabilized base. In most cases, in the, in the past, these roadways, the base sections were not stabilized. However, in a few minutes, I'm going to talk about what we're doing in Meadow Creek, and you'll see, but we are cement stabilizing the base there as an, not a reconstruction method, but an enhanced preventive maintenance. And I'll explain that in just a minute. This graphic just kind of shows you what a seal coat looks like. That's a single seal you see. So you see the, what they're calling binder is basically the, the oil. And then the rock on top of it. Now, we apply a second course, and so you see the voids there in between those, those rocks in the aggregate. That second course then gets in between there and fills those up and provides even a better surface than a single course. But that just kind of shows you how it works. We use several different sizes of rock. Historically, here in Victoria, a grade three with a grade four over the top of it. That's three-eighths rock, three-eighths inch nominal diameter rock is the first coat, and quarter inch is the top coat. That allows you to apply more oil, get more seal. The bigger the rock, the more oil you can apply without having a bleeding problem. However, over time, because of complaints about ride quality, we have tried now to mainly use a grade four or a grade five rock. In some areas, we're using a five over a four. In Meadow Creek, currently, we're using two fours. Part of the issue with choosing aggregate size right now also is availability. Coated seal coat rock is very difficult to obtain right now. It's hard to come by. Text dot has, has let a lot of projects over the last couple of years, and it is consuming most of the rock that is available for road. So it's, it's difficult to get. And so when we're making a decision on whether to use two fours or a four and a five, some of it has to do with what's available. I can get, right now in Meadow Creek, we're using two fours.
Is, is there an equivalent of those numbers for the hot mix? You said that that was a combination of sand and oil and, I think, stones?
But, but it is, it is manufactured in a, in a processed in a plant, so it doesn't have the.
Does it?
It's, it's a very different product.
Is it, its size, though, how would that compare? Is it more like a one or two or totally irrelevant?
There's, there's, there's several different grades of hot mix, and each one varies based upon, again, the aggregate size. The, you have a type B mix, which has got half-inch aggregate in it. Then you've got a type C, which is three-eighths. And then a D mix, which is typically what we use in Victoria, and Text Dot uses on their surface course. Got a little bit of three-eighths and quarter inch, and then there's even a finer mix. So it just, again, it's gradation, same as Lynn's talking about on the seal coat.
It's a very different product, and it's put in a thick lip.
It packs closer together, I guess, as part of it.
Okay. With seal coats, you'll see a lot of loose aggregate when, when you're done with it, and that is part of the problem, and that, that, that's what we've heard complaints with about Meadow Creek. It, it has to be swept up. And, and our contract requires our contractor to come in at the conclusion of the project and sweep up and remove all that loose aggregate. Then it requires to come back about a month later and resweep it to pick up anything, any loose aggregate that might have shelled over that time and come loose. Right now, at Meadow Creek, you will see that loose aggregate there, just like shown there. It will be cleaned up. If we require the contractor to come in and clean it up before he's finished, we will incur additional mobilization cost. I'm trying to get that cost right now from the contractor, but I do not know it. Right now, I do not have it available to me, but it will be a cost. And so, because they will have to mobilize them, a vacuum sweeper, probably from San Antonio is what we're thinking.
Okay, so that's a result of specific complaints. Otherwise, they'd reluctantly wait till they're through with everything, then clean it all up.
And we have not, and we have not authorized them to mobilize. I, all I have done is asked them for a price.
Okay.
My recommendation will be, let's wait until the project is done and sweep it up.
How long will that be? With weather?
It depends on the weather and rock availability.
Just stay over there, Ken.
Meadow Creek specifically, they do have the rock available. They're needing to do some additional work out there before they get to it, so it's.
They're going to do some, some hot mix level up, and I'm, I'll talk about that in a few minutes, too.
Real quick about this, when they do the sweeping, what happens to that rock? Where's it go?
They will dispose of it.
Why, why wouldn't they keep it?
It, it is dirty, and is not suitable to reuse on a seal coat roadway. Or I wouldn't want to use it on one of our seal coat roadways.
Do you inspect, I'm sorry, Mr. Albers, do y'all inspect before, after the sweepings? Do you go back? How often? Like, three months later after the second sweeping? Is that ever done?
We, we certainly, if, typically, if, if we have a problem like that, is, we'll get complaints about it, and then we'll go inspect it.
Okay.
As with all our construction projects, there is a one-year warranty. Now, in order to get them to come back and resweep as a warranty, we'd have to show that there was a faulty workmanship or something, either faulty material, faulty workmanship. If it shales just because, we would probably have to incur that cost.
But you know, Lynn, with our street sweeping project now, and we've got a good contractor, the residential streets will be swept.
They are being, yes.
So, you know, going forward, hopefully, you'll see a difference in those sweeping cycles.
Mayor, I have a couple of points.
Yes, Mr. Albers.
That's a lot of loose aggregate. It's a shame that that's going to waste. So I, you know, I would think that the quality of workmanship there, you know, we're losing a lot. If you, I don't know how many miles that is, or subdivision worth of aggregate when you collect it all. Second, do you have an idea what the actual cost of the vacuuming and sweeping at the end of the project is?
I'm waiting.
Currently, on this current project?
No, because it's rolled into the, it's rolled into the.
I would hope that in the future projects, we would have an intermediate sweep built into the project. Because I've been out there, I don't know if the rest of y'all have, but I've been out there, and, you know, what struck me strange was that we did a similar seal coat downtown recently. And that was done very quickly. It was a small project. It got finished, probably almost before it got started, and it was swept, and boom. There was hardly any loose pebble or aggregate. And I understand that subdivision is much bigger than what we did here downtown, and maybe other smaller projects that get the start and finishes very quick, and you can get to the vacuum and the sweeping very quickly. But in these subdivisions, like in this particular case, where there are big projects that may take ninety, a hundred and twenty, whatever many days, I think we really need to factor in somewhere along halfway, built into the project, a sweep. And it's just a shame that we're going to take all that and dispose of it, when I think you could probably use it for, for other purposes, but.
Well, that's kind of a contractor issue. I mean, I would, and not to be argumentative, but we don't want to be shorted on aggregate. We want to make sure they cover the street. It does, I agree with you, it does appear wasteful. Now, that, obviously, that's before any sweeping has been done. Good Lord, you can tell by looking at the picture. And I doubt it goes to waste. I, Ken, I bet you know, there's a lot of gravel parking lots and yards that would take that aggregate and spread it out. I personally believe. And I'm sure that contractor's willing to take a truckload.
Well, I would, for one, would not like to step into that if I parked in that, on that curb, much less.
That's not a complete situation there.
That's not, that's not an actual picture from Meadow Creek. That's.
No, 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 but is that a local example?
That is a, that is a, I don't know where the picture came from. I pulled it off the internet, but it is, if you go to Meadow Creek, you will see aggregate just like that.
Yeah, but that's not finished, is what I'm trying to say.
It is finished. No, not at all.
They'll come back, anyway.
That's right.
Could we add a line item in our future bids that have an alternate for sweeping?
Sure. I mean, we can certainly do it.
A third sweep, basically, an inner sweep.
Regardless of whether you.
Break it out, you mean?
Just as an alternate.
As an ad, ad alternate, we can go, yes, sir, we can.
We can certainly do that. I'll also add that the downtown project was very different from what we did, what we're doing here. Because what we're doing here is a reclaimed seal, putting that seal over raw base versus downtown was seal coating over existing asphalt. So, and I'll talk about that here in a few, in a minute.
Typically, you would also see more damage at any scrub points, stop signs, around corners than you would on a straightaway. So you'll see it build up near an intersection where there's a stop sign, or around a corner, the scrubbing of the tires seems to shuck it.
My observation was, there's already failure out there. Where it's melted, or there's been heavy weight that's caused indentions into the seal coat, and then there's track marks where someone did a donut or something and cut into it, so. All kinds of stuff going on.
That thought occurred to me a while ago because of what we inherited. We can't help the base, we can't, we inherited it. What, where was, when was those streets built? Eighties? I mean, I wouldn't hear, and I didn't set that street standard back then, so.
Eighty-two.
We don't have any choice, other than somebody up here, you know, planting a money tree. But.
But maintenance is better than nothing.
That's right. I, I just want to make sure that we're in agreement on that. I don't know what else to do. Everybody up here would love to have the perfect hot mix road, but short of that, we have to make an attempt to save it for the long run, and that's what I think we're doing.
And I think we've got to constantly remember, too, the street is still under construction. We have not accepted the work. And so those areas like that, we'll go back and we're, our inspectors are out there, and they'll talk, work with the contractor on getting it corrected.
By contrast, seal coat, about five dollars per square yard, or thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars per lane mile. So about one-eighth the cost of the reconstruction. Now, you'll notice this, some of you probably remember this, this list. This is a list of the streets at the time that we put together the residential street improvement plan that we're already behind the curve on needing to be seal coated. Some fifty-six. Some fifty-six miles of streets. And of course, they start with a street rating of eighty-five at the top, and as you go down the list, the streets are newer and have a higher rating. So we're starting up there with the Meadow Creeks and Hamlets that had an eighty-five street rating. So it's right there on the cusp of, do we prevent it, put preventive maintenance, or do we make them a candidate for reconstruction? And I think this graphic will kind of show what I'm trying to get to here. You know, when a street is good up there, it's clearly well above eighty-five, it's clearly a candidate for preventive maintenance and seal coat. And that's like what we're doing at Mayfair and Mayfair Terrace, where you spray that right over the top of existing asphalt. When the street is in very poor condition, it's obviously a candidate for reconstruction, and that's what we're doing at Castle Hills. It's that center area, right around that transition period, where it's like, well, it could go either way, right around eighty-five. And so that is Meadow Creek. And so what we're doing there is, instead of just a typical preventive maintenance program, we're doing an enhanced preventive maintenance program. It's called a reclaimed seal. And it's basically, you know, in a reconstruct, we go in there and dig up all the base and haul it off, and we bring in new base. And that's a huge part of the cost. What we're doing in these subdivisions is going in with a big mixer, grinding up the base that's there now, then taking transport loads of cement and bringing them in, and mixing that cement with that base, and then resetting that base in there with a blade. And when we do that, it hardens up and firms up that base, where it's very hard, because the heart of a roadway, of course, is its foundation. Now, it is gravel base right now. It is not limestone. And so it is not gonna ever be as smooth as a limestone-based roadway. You can take a seal coat, for instance, Castle Hills right now, even though it has a seal coat, it's smoother than these roads over here. But you've got a limestone base to work with, whereas here, you've got a gravel base with large rocks in it. Now, we are... What Ken was talking about a while ago, because some of those areas are rough in Meadow Creek, especially in the intersections and on Pennsylvania, before we let them shoot their double seal on there, they've got their prime coat down now with the ice rock, they're gonna bring in a very thin layer of hot mix and blade it in to try to level that up a little bit before they shoot their double seal on that. We think that will help make the ride smoother, we're gonna see. Of course, after that base work's done, then you come in and apply your double seal coat. The cost of that reclaimed seal process is about seventeen dollars per square yard. So about three times higher than a traditional seal coat, but still about a third of the cost of reconstruction. I wanted to finish up with this video, and then I'll address any questions you might have. This is a TextDOT video that will go over basically some of the same things I've said. Keep in mind that some of the numbers they quote in here, though, are for resurfacing only, which does not include any base work. And so it is a lot less per square yard than my total reconstruct price of forty-two dollars, because it doesn't have any of the base work in it.
Over time, roads develop cracks and potholes from normal traffic and weather. This causes rough driving surfaces, but it also damages vehicles and poses safety hazards. Simply put, roads must be maintained. Costs of repairs rise as roads age. We can't let our invested tax dollars go to waste by not maintaining our roads. We've entrusted the Texas Department of Transportation, TextDOT, to find cost-effective solutions for road maintenance. Resurfacing is one solution for repairing roads. Resurfacing involves removing the top layer of the damaged roadway and replacing it with a new surface. The result is a smooth roadway that is safe and quiet to ride on. The downside to resurfacing is the expense. Although prices vary across the state, it costs approximately one hundred five to one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to resurface one mile of a two-lane road. To add to that cost, the newly resurfaced roadway will require maintenance in approximately four years. A more cost-effective preventive maintenance option is a seal coat. A seal coat, also known as a chip seal, can extend the life expectancy of a given roadway by many years at a fraction of the cost of resurfacing. It costs approximately thirty-five to sixty-five thousand dollars to place a seal coat on one mile of a two-lane road, a savings of up to ninety thousand dollars per mile. A greater benefit is that the roadway will last another seven to ten years, saving even more money. Seal coats are used on roads that are beginning to crack. The process begins by filling roadway cracks with a layer of hot oil. This seals water out and keeps cracks from expanding. A layer of rock is spread on top of the oil and then packed down. At first, driving on a newly sealed road is louder than on a resurfaced road. Noise fades as traffic packs down the rock, pressing the smaller rocks into the seal and oil like a puzzle. Notice how the road surface starts to smooth out one year after the seal coat was applied. After four years, the road is even smoother. Some cyclists find it difficult to ride on new seal coats because of the initial rough surface. When possible, TextDOT provides advance notice to cycling groups about upcoming seal coat projects so they can adjust their routes until the fresh coating can settle. Eventually, traffic pushes the rocks into the oil, and the road surface smoothes out and becomes a great roadway for cyclists. With an eighty-thousand-lane mile system, any stretch of roadway that doesn't require constant attention from maintenance crews saves taxpayer dollars and allows funds to be spent elsewhere. In an economy where squeezing every penny out of each dollar is top priority, seal coating is just one way TextDOT is bridging the gap between a growing system and shrinking revenues. Over time...
With that, that's the end of my presentation. I will answer any more questions.
Do you have any progress map of Meadow Creek to show what's been done to each road and section?
I don't have that available right now. I could put one together very quickly, but I don't. All of the roadways at least have a prime coat. Some have seal coat, and some are waiting. I know Pennsylvania still does not have seal coat. It's gonna get some hot mix level up first. Baltimore going in has not been...
The two, I can... Williamsburg from Chesapeake... Williamsburg from Chesapeake in has got the double on it, the final product. And also Nantucket and New Haven also have both of those completed seal on.
I guess the question is, how far along, percentage-wise, are you with that subdivision?
I would say about fifty percent.
Halfway, okay.
Yeah, because when I was driving today, I talked to Mr. Short about this. What I saw was, you know, one to two-inch difference in elevations because of the gravel base. And it looks like most of it's been mixed with the cement already, but that's translating through that chip seal, and it's still making a rough ride, because there's no smooth out from that gravel base all the way up through the surface.
Now, if it's in the area where the white rock was shot...
It translates right up.
That has only received a prime coat so far.
Right, but there's no...
No level up, is what you're saying?
No level up, so every indentation in that base is getting transferred up through the chip seal process.
I understand. What I'm saying is, if it's an area that has the white rock right now, it hasn't gotten the chip seal yet, so it hasn't gotten the level up. On those roadways that haven't gotten the chip seal, they will get some hot mix put on them as a level up, and hopefully, that'll smooth them out. On some of those, I will agree, that on some of those that were already completed, did not get the hot mix.
Right.
And I think that's the point you're making.
Correct.
And yes, it is, when you're on a gravel, gravel base like that. But it is... But I will say this, it is much better than what it was before we went in there.
If you're not prepared to answer this one, just tell me so. But as we're learning about different ways to rebuild roads, I know you've got some type of repair in mind for tanglewood. And it's not this massive type thing, but is it dumping some hot mix or...
It is blading for, as an interim repair.
Right, before the complete rebuild.
Basically, blading in some hot mix to try to level up and improve ride quality in there. And then, of course, after the pipes are replaced, then when we come in, we will completely reconstruct it, take out the base, stabilize the subgrade, put in geogrid, bring in new limestone base. It'll be a complete rebuild at that time.
And with that, with tanglewood, council, I mean, if you talk to anybody over there, they need to make sure they understand we're not rebuilding the street. If they see a little bit of level up over here and think, that's it, and they get angry. That's not the case. That's eighty thousand dollars, I think we're gonna try to budget into that. It's just to try to mitigate some problems till they get a true rebuild. And I know when I talk to people over there, I'm gonna stress that. No, 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 that's not it. It's just a temporary stopgap.
Interim measure.
So we need to make that very clear to them, Mr. Alvarez.
A bunch of years ago, we started doing some crack sealing. Are we still carrying on with that?
We did... We basically did the entire city in, what, one or two years?
One or...
One or two years. As now that we've adopted a preventive maintenance program and plan, we will be doing some crack seal every year. Even, you know, we probably will have two contracts as part of that, maybe, unless we can find a contract that'll do both. But we plan on doing some more crack seal, yes. It is an integral part of preventive maintenance.
And that was gonna be in my next question. Do you still consider it a good maintenance policy to do the crack sealing
Absolutely.
before you even get to reclaim and overlay or seal coating or anything else?
Absolutely.
Just keeps it from deteriorating and getting into the...
Keeps water from getting into that base.
That's a two- to three-year thing.
Say, with the new street standards that we adopted up here, do we foresee less problems of this in the future after all these major roads and subdivisions get rebuilt?
I think that we certainly will see a much longer life and better street. We will still...
Without the maintenance.
Have to have preventive maintenance. The fifty-year design life we built into that standard was based on continuing with an ongoing preventive maintenance plan.
Sure, but the base will be certainly improved compared to what was fifty, thirty...
Yes, sir.
Twenty, twenty, ten.
Correct.
Typically, anytime we have budgetary pressures, one of the first things that usually gets it is some maintenance items, because they're not immediate and disastrous. They just get that way over time.
Of course, that'll be factored into the cost of your lot, too, in the future. I hope that, getting back to the sweeping component of this thing, or vacuuming, or whatever... I mean, I was just happy if we could just go sweep it, but I understand there's a vacuuming process that's more practical. That we get a number soon, and hopefully, that we can find somebody in the budget or bring it back to council for us to look at, or share with us that cost so that we can address this concern in that subdivision for the short term, and then hopefully, plan in the future for other subdivisions, an interim sweep or slash vacuum.
Lynn, since we've got the aggregate, what's our, you know, a range of possible completion over there? Do we know? I meant...
It's the weather dependent.
I understand that.
They were planning on doing some hot mix this week, and the rain, of course, caught them, so they're looking at hopefully next week to start on it. The seal, the actual seal coat process is real quick.
If they can get the rock, and they say they have the rock now for Meadow Creek. So what are you thinking, three weeks?
Three weeks.
With no rain?
No, no.
Three weeks of good weather, three to four weeks.
But that project has already been going on for how many months?
Couple of months.
Yeah?
Yes.
So in Woodway, we learned we needed to check the base for stability and make sure it wasn't failing. Meadow Creek, I'd suggest that we do a lessons learned on that one, too, and, you know, no going in, we got a gravel base, it might need to be something in that bid for level up or see how it turns out after we do the level up. But as long as we can keep learning from it. Do we have any that we've done that have been gravel base and have turned out right?
We haven't done a seal coat in a very long time.
We, that's correct. The seal coat, what we did in the past was a reclaimed seal, and then we overlaid it. So we don't really have any...
I mean, now, we did Riverside Park recently, and those, I think, came out very nice, but that is seal over existing asphalt.
Right.
It's a different process. We haven't done reclaimed seal like this. We've done reclaimed seal overlay, which is a different... Same process, but it's got another four-hundred-thousand-dollar step on top of it.
And I think, I don't want anybody to leave here thinking that we think this is a bad process, because we don't. We think it's a good process. Engineers think it's a good process. So it's just, you know, I think some of the residents aren't happy that it's not a hot mix, but that never was the intent.
It never was over there.
Well, it wasn't the intent. It's not a rebuild. When we rebuild that road in the future, it will be, so I'll...
I don't think it's that. I think, I really think, you know, if this hot mix process will work on that base layer of gravel, so it doesn't get translated up to the top of the roadway with the chip seal.
I'd be happy with you, thanks. Better education for our subdivisions, knowing what the process is. And then if we can afford a sweep sometime in the middle, just to kind of clean things up a little bit and keep the rock from going into the yards and the sidewalks, on the edge, I think we're on the right track.
And I agree with both of you, Mr. Buck, and I know you guys know that. That's the point. Hopefully, that'll work, that leveling up. And then, Mr. Alvarez, I know we're also doing a video for Channel Fifteen that'll be really helpful to educate, because you can run that repeatedly. So I look forward to that. That'll help. Very good. I just want to thank some of the folks from Meadow Creek that called me. I, you know, they've been... I've had some pleasant conversations. They have good questions, and rightfully so, and I appreciate their patience. It hasn't all been that bad. I know you went for a ride with a gentleman that I spoke to the other day, and I was very familiar with where he was, so we'll get it done.
We just have to be patient during these construction projects, and I realize that's not normal. Okay.
I can just jump in there.
Gilbert is here tonight to talk about hotel, motel allocation for the, specifically, the outside agencies. You know, we, you all know that our revenues are down compared to what we budgeted for. And so we're at a point where we need direction on council on whether you want us to amend contracts and pull the reserves down to pay these outside agencies a little more than what they're gonna get. And based on some discussion tonight, it hopefully, it will help Thomas move forward with an application process for next year. So, okay. Does everybody have a copy?
I have extra copies.
Yeah, I did, I did, too. So, is everybody good? I think everybody's good. Okay. Yes.
Are we gonna start with the revenues piece of it first or not? Because we didn't get a copy of that.
Copy of the revenue?
Well, the, I mean, the hotel tax revenues.
The page three?
It's...
No, what we're actually getting...
Oh, well, he's got his projections there, but...
Well, it's projected here.
Okay.
It's on the website right now.
Right. First two quarters?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've been tracking since, you know, since it started dipping down. As Ms. Garrett's mentioning that, you know, it's kind of funny, we were talking about money tree. This money tree's going the other way, okay. But hotel tax right now is being projected to have come in under about two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. You know, when I was budgeting one point six, we're looking at about one point three. So far, I've been hitting that mark to get to the one-three. A lot of the current situation with the hotel tax trend, as Ms. Garrett was mentioning, that management and staff are looking for some direction as to how do we move forward and how we want to allocate the outside agencies for this coming year, which, of course, will have an effect on the 2017 year. In the letter that was sent out to you, I assume, maybe a couple of weeks ago, something like that, staff, and even included the mayor, came up with three options. Granted, we can sit here all night and come up with multiple variations of options, but we decided to take here's from one spectrum to the latter spectrum. And then, of course, we gave you one almost in the middle, somewhere latter in the middle. Option one, we go by contract. You pay out according to the contract, that means they get an average about thirty percent of their funding. In other words, they only get seventy percent of it. In 2017, under that option, probability, we will have about four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, because you come back now... because you come back now and distribute to next year. Option two is that you fund a hundred percent of it, no matter what. We use some of the fund balance, we, we fund all of it. Under this scenario, for 2017, of course, we're using it all up now. Probability is you probably have zero capability next year to fund outside agencies. Unless something happens drastically, I don't see it happen, but it'd be zero. Option three is more down the middle, not necessarily in the middle, but it's like, okay, let's, mayor came up with eighty percent. We just gave out eighty percent this year of the total funding. For 2017, that leaves you about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, of which sixty-four thousand, in his scenario, were allocated to Main Street program. And the hundred thousand will go through the remaining outside agency funding. So you have the far end per contract, the other end a hundred percent, or you go down to eighty, or you come up with some other rationale on a percentage waste, you know, a, a message, a method. You know, it could be eighty, seventy, whatever you want to do. But that's what this letter, so. On the, we're here to, you know, get some direction from council as to how do you want to proceed forward. And, uh, with that, I always quiet my lips.
If I may, I'll just take up right quick. You know, I had a, I've had a lot of discussion with various agencies and they were satisfied with the eighty percent. That's, I think, I'm just saying, that's path to least resistance and it leaves some minimal amount for next year. Next year's going to be very small, but you would agree, and I, forgive me if you said this, Gilbert, but if we funded this at a hundred percent of the obligations, we would have no program next year, safe to say. But if we funded at eighty, you know, some of them are taking a hit. And the problem is, and I, I say this, I, because I've had this discussion with some of them, they've budgeted all of it. They shouldn't do that because it's subject to our collections. You know, and I've talked to Mr. Guish here about that, that we'll stress that more and more to him going forward. Don't budget all of it. We don't control the collections, you know. But I think the eighty percent is a common ground that seemed to satisfy a lot of people. And I would recommend that. But council?
Go ahead, Ms. Scott.
I just, I need a little clarification on, on what we're saying here with that if we fund eighty percent, we'll have some to go forward to next year, but if we fund a hundred percent, we won't. Are we looking at that in a vacuum of this year's collections only? Are, are we figuring no collections at all next year? Or otherwise, I'm, I'm missing the connection.
Connection is, uh, beg pardon. I'm sorry. I should explain that we, I had to make, I really made some lookout for the 2017 years. I'm, I'm expecting around the same range of one point three million dollars in hotel tax. By the time you take personnel costs, professional services, the CBB in place, community center. You left about maybe fifty thousand dollars and that'd be the reserve. So all that we eaten up with just the city operation itself.
That, that was the connection that I needed to hear.
Correct. If you cut back now, of course, you don't spend all that money. You carry it over to the next year. That's what gives you that four hundred eighty. Or under the eighty percent scenario, you come back, but you leave about a hundred and sixty, something like that.
Thank you.
Hundred and sixty-four, sorry.
See, that's my point. Uh, City of Victoria internal expenditures, with, with the exception of option one, community center fund, operating community center fund, building improvements, the other two options leave everything the same. We're not even talking about cutting any of those items, uh, at all, or are, or are we?
We are. You want to do it or?
Which, I'll let you shoot.
Remember sixteen seventeen's not on here. And I, I mean, I did my own spreadsheet, but for sixteen seventeen and city manager, you correct me if I'm wrong. For example, capital outlay program, community center is, is off of here. I mean, we're zeroing out. The CBB, for example, goes from nine oh five to six something. So we're sharing the pain and you're exactly right, Mr. Alvarez. And I don't have that in front of me, but.
I didn't, I didn't bring it. I'm sorry.
Internally, we take our own significant for next year in order to preserve some program for these agencies.
Uh, I, I'm sorry. I have it here. For example, in 2017, personnel will be about thirty-four. Personnel expenses, that's the one we kind of use some of the CBB director hotel. That's what that is. If that don't happen, the general fund has to pick up that cost. The twenty-two thousand dollars in professional service for next year is basically audits of the hotels, which has been very beneficial. I think we need to continue that and also for the services through the web, how they report, reports. Six hundred ninety-five is CBB next year so far right now per budget. And there's about a hundred and one thousand for tournament and program.
Tell me what CBB is it?
Six ninety-five as of today.
And the boot fest is part of, wrapped up in there or not?
I didn't, boot fest not even included because we're going to use reserves for whatever we have left over. So we cut back there too as well. We're not adding anything else on that one.
Okay, thank you.
And then tournament program, which, you know, is a hundred and one for next year. That's what we're looking at. But folks, that's been beneficial for City of Victoria. What brings in all these tournaments fills in those hotels. So I think those are top of caliber programs you want to continue and not cut back on. Now, if you jump back to the 2016, the same thing applies. I didn't cut back on personnel. I didn't come back on the professional service, which is also the audits on the hotels and everything else. Didn't cut back on CBB because that is your mechanism to try to promote Victoria itself. Uh, the seventy-five thousand in tournaments, that's something, you know, you, I think it's, it's beneficial that you need to do something to bring in revenue. So that keeps the engine going.
Why did in option one, community center funding go down so drastically, but not in option two and three?
Well, option one is that everybody takes the hit, including the CBB, the, uh, community center side. We took that all on ourself. We said, okay, everybody's going to take that hit. This community center will also take the hit for the first year. Option two, everybody gets funded no matter what. So.
So shouldn't that be eighty percent in option three for those two?
Option, well, I'll let the mayor ask. I took the mayor's numbers on this one and we were going to fund everything. That's not funded at eighty.
I left this year, I think untouched.
Yeah, we, for the city services we did.
My focus was more to preserve something for next year. I mean, this group can obviously do whatever in terms of this year, but with respect to internal, I left that alone.
Well, um, we can't predict an oilfield boom or bust. I remember the bumper stickers from the last one says, oh, Lord, please give us another oilfield boom. We promise we won't waste it this time. Guess what? We never learned. I do have a concern of, of varying off of contract. And I think we ought to discuss this openly because we do have these fluctuations. They're a fact of life. They face us all. If we fund past what the contract is, be aware that no matter what happens next year, the same expectation will be there. Not that we will be able to fulfill it, but that expectation will nonetheless be there.
Question for Mr. Guish along those lines. Is it any way to fund these outside agencies based on our fund balance instead of our projected income from the hotel tax?
I think that's probably a question for the finance director rather than me, but I would assume that you'd have to have the fund balance built up first before you started spending it, which.
General fund?
That's.
No, no, the fund balance and.
Well, technically, option two is what you're doing there, Mr. Bucknight. You dipping into your fund balance to pay out everybody, no matter what the hotel receipts collections are.
No, I'm saying we came up with the amount of, um, the original budget amount of four hundred eighty thousand based on projected hotel and motel tax funds that were going to come in.
Okay.
Right? But instead of looking at that projected number for the basis of what was available to spend, what if we looked at what was already in the rig reserves and use that as this is allocation? Because we know that it is available and you wouldn't be stuck in this going forward. It doesn't help answer the question tonight and maybe you don't have to answer it right now.
Right. You mean, change and move. Okay, I'm with you. Now, I, I'm on the right track.
Does the law let you do that?
And that's why I was for Mr. Guish because I didn't know how the law is.
Well, there, there's a couple hurdles that you got to cross. You know, you're limited on some of your, your, your topic allocation. Arts and everything else. If you meet those standards, fine, and, and, uh, advertising. If council wants to distribute everything based upon, I mean, you just, you can do that. But, uh, while back, the reason why we had to reserve because council wanted to start accumulating money. If, if the intent is moving forward, not have nothing there, that's council's, you know, decision. But my, 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 I always have to say that.
I'm not saying the whole.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm just going to the radical side here. Okay.
I would rather see a policy that you have a percentage.
From my point of view, I think you should have.
I, I understand what you're asking is, is it legally permissible to put off the expenditure of money from one fiscal year to another in order to build up a fund balance and then spend only that fund balance in future?
He's just saying, if we think we're going to have four hundred thousand in reserve, then could we just spend? We could, do we do fifteen percent of the four hundred thousand is what he's asking.
I'm saying because you know you have it available and if these agencies.
Yeah.
And that's a future question. You don't have to answer it tonight.
And we can. Yeah, we can.
It's legally permissible to do that.
We can.
The answer to that question is yes, to answer your question.
Come up again.
And I know we're going to talk about it in the budget, but I don't think I want to emphasize that. I think you need to have some little reserve to capture something. That, I'm saying, however, what a percentage, we're on the same track.
Yes.
Well, and I think he's taking it a step further, but did my question earlier fit into that of building, having something left over and then he's kind of getting to that same thing? Would that amount of money be what we could commit to as, as opposed to an estimate?
I have a question.
You can build up anything you want to build up and you can set up a reserve and two different reserve. You can reserve for the city, reserve for outside agency when it starts back and, you know, when hotel receipts come down. But we got to build it up to get to that point. Uh, so anything can be played out in the future. Absolutely. Just depends. It's a policy driven decision by council.
Okay. My question is, aren't these contracts, doesn't it state on there that based on the revenue that we would get, they might get all of their money and not all of it or whatever? So.
Yes, ma'am. The, each of the contracts with the outside agency specifically says they're paid in arrears on a quarterly basis and only based on actual collections. So if the collections go down, they take a haircut. They don't get as much. And that's what option one, I understand, is intended to illustrate, is if we hold them to that contract language and say, we're only going to pay you based on collections, that's the dollar figure that we project each of them would receive.
And finance started notifying these agencies early in the process when we saw those revenues not coming in. So, you know, they were notified.
Okay, I understand. But if that is already in the contract, why would we even consider option one, uh, options two and three since they are already aware that by signing that contract, you know, we, the city are obligated to whatever we collected?
It's purely political. I mean, that, to me, at the end of the day, that thing, it's a policy decision. It's, it's a matter of whether y'all, because I think some council members have been getting calls about.
Correct.
Can y'all look at trying to fund us a little more, you know, out of your reserves and that, and that's what it's all about. And, and if council chooses to go a different route, we will have to bring back contract amendments.
Correct.
How confident are we on that one point three million for?
As of today, pretty good.
So we asked you about the one point six.
Oh, that was a long time ago.
I know. We knew, we knew this was, we knew this was going south. I mean, obviously, we knew this, you know.
Well, if you look in prior years' budget, I had it, it was just higher. So in twenty fifteen, sixteen, I just shot for one sixes. It's like, if you look back to twenty fifteen, I thought I was going to come in under, but I, I went actually a little over the one point seven. And that's when everything started going down a little south. I said, okay.
That was, that last quarter of fifteen, it was negative, negative, negative.
Yeah.
This year, every quarter, every month has been negative.
Listen, we used to average around three hundred thousand plus a quarter. Now we're averaging anywhere from one oh three to one oh six, one oh ten, a quarter, a quarter.
Per month.
Per month. It's a per month a quarter. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, your first quarter was three twenty-seven point.
Okay, yeah, exactly. Yeah, three hundred, yeah. So I, I, I feel pretty confident right now. I think I'll hit that one three. If we get anything higher, that's great. Actually, in that one point three, one five includes about fifty thousand dollars of delinquent taxes I just collected about a month ago. We closed out, one of the hotels finally sold their place and we collected. So if you want to really be picky about it, be less than one point three, but.
You had a little anomaly there, basically.
Well, we knew it was out there for collection, but it's a matter of time.
But what's perplexing to me is option one, when you say available for outside agencies is actually more, but then you've made all these drastic cuts, according to what formula, I don't know. And then you, you leave yourself with an ending balance of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand. So you're only going to spend a hundred and forty-five thousand under option one to the outside agencies. How is, how is that under option one? How do you arrive? What, what, what are you doing there to get that math?
Option one?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's based on the percentage that we collected. We allocate the shortage. It's subtracted from what's budgeted on the agency and the numbers come out. It's just a mathematical deal that you, you're coming in seventy percent under, then you're going to cut back seventy percent across the board. So you're going to have seven hundred eighty-seven dollars.
That seems like a very drastic, for that piece of it, while the rest, while you're available for outside agencies, number actually goes up under option one.
Because you're not spending it all. You get, you're holding it back for next year.
Hold on, Gilbert. Okay. The one line item, where's the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars going out of the operating community center fund?
Two hundred and thirty?
The difference? That's the problem here. Where's that going? Why isn't that carried across all the way? I don't understand.
I'm not following your question.
Yeah, where are you?
Under option one, community center fund operating.
Okay.
Okay, you've got one hundred thousand and three hundred sixty-nine dollars.
That's because everybody took the equal hit.
No, I'm asking where, what are we not doing? If, if under option one, you, you can remove that.
You're pulling reserves down.
That's all I'm doing.
You're just pulling reserves down at the community center.
Okay, that's what I want to make a point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sending any money, so I'm using the reserves over there. That's all I'm doing.
Okay, so I guess the ending fund balance is what's puzzling then.
Because it's this particular.
That was not part of my discussion. That's why I'm confused, but that's okay. Okay, I understand. Ms. Scott, what'd you say?
I think it's because it's this particular fund. And we're looking at one fund, but when he says he's pulling out of reserves, I think he's talking about a different fund.
No, no, the reserve is from this one too.
My focus was to preserve something for sixteen, seventeen. And that's why the eighty percent, and again, I just want to repeat, in, in many discussions with these entities, and yes, I'm sorry, they spent a lot of the money and they're hurting bad, okay? Because now all of a sudden, they've got bills and they can't pay them because the money's not there. And we could be punitive with our contract and say, too bad, so sad. I prefer we don't do that. Again, my conversation's eighty percent. Some of them, they're very thankful for that. If that's a compromise. You know, going, looking back the last ten or so years I've been up here, this hot funds process has gone around the world and it's gotten so much better. And we have staff and council to thank for that. Obviously, there's still more improvements to be made. Some of them, I told them, why did you ever budget and spend all of that knowing darn well in that contract it's subject to collections? But they did. You know, that's what we're left with. So that's what my effort was to, to share some of that pain. And of course, staff for next year will cut our internal use of it. Anyway, sorry.
They spent money they didn't have because this gets paid in the arrears.
Right. Well, their events occurred before the end of the year. I mean, you know, you got to remember that. I, I'm just saying they shouldn't, if they expect to get eighty thousand dollars, or excuse me, let's say forty thousand, they should plan on spending thirty, have their event, you know, and then carry the rest over. That's a live and learn type situation.
But is it fair to say that they've already received at least the first two quarters?
They received first and second.
So we know that they've already received some of this money.
Right.
So what are you telling me? If, let's say, for example, the first two quarters, fifty percent. Let's take the first one, Victoria Symphony. So let's say they got twenty-five thousand up to this point. I'm just hypothetical. I don't know what it is. But now, under option one, you say, oh, no, we're just going to give you fifteen. They're going to give us back ten?
No, 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 no. We've been paying out based on receipt collections.
Well, I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't know. You may have a circumstance.
We don't just give them money and then also, no, everything we've been paying out has been, whatever I collect, that ratio goes out to everybody. So they don't, they don't get, so it's there already in place. So if I continue the way it is, what you end up looking at is option one. So in other words, for the, for the next, for the past two quarters, what they've been, what they have received is a cutback. They had not received their full allocation if they wanted.
They won't be in a position where they have to give money back at this point.
No, 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 because I, every, contract requires me to pay out as, as much I receive. If I get X dollars, you only get X dollars. There's no way I can advance them anymore.
You prorate it over.
Yes.
That's all it is.
The example, say the symphony, they were budgeted, they were contracted for like fifty thousand. If we only think they're going to get fifteen thousand after four, you know, two quarters, they probably received seventy-five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, at this point.
Well, I was just concerned that we're going to ask them for money back and they've already spent it.
No.
They've just got bills that they don't have the income for is, is kind of what the message is.
A lot of these agencies have not filed, filed their report anyway. Usually the activity, it doesn't happen in thirty-fourth quarter.
I could support your option. I could support your option, hopefully y'all would, option three, but hopefully you would come back maybe two months before the end of fiscal year and look at that to see, you might be able to give them more, just depending on what may have happened to your projection if it's.
Again, you know, management and the staff has presented to you, to council, just to make sure, is this, what direction you want to, we'll continue the way it is right now. We just want to have a conversation. Do you want us to change course and move to a different direction assumptions to play out the rest of the year? We just want to make sure that we're satisfying where our council wishes are. That's all we're doing.
Okay. And I know the entities, I'm sorry, Ms. Chalpas, the entities, they wish they could get a solid number. I suppose this would give them that number, all things held constant, collections, et cetera. But, Mr. Chalpas?
Gilbert's accuracy has been pretty good in the past, so I don't expect a dramatic difference. Of course, if the world could end tomorrow, we would never predict that either. But that being said, I can, I can support somewhere in between. If, we got to remember that these are all very worthwhile organizations, doing some great work. They're all our neighbors. We work together with everyone. I wish that they had budgeted better, just as you do. That being said, we're going to throw them to the wolves or try to come to an interim solution, but it must be strongly worded that this is a one-time only. Because of those expectations going forward, we couldn't continue this for more than one year unless the world turns around.
And I want to clarify, I didn't talk to all of them. I can't say for certain that they all spent a hundred percent. Let me clarify that.
Valid point.
You know, a few did. The one thing, too, is we're not going to ever give out money we don't have. I understand that. I mean, if there's a point in time where fifty percent is all you get, because that's all we got, that's what's going to happen, right?
Right.
There's still, I mean, I still, now that I look at the list, you've got some, one or two entities here that are for profit. And I sure didn't want us to cross that line when we did, but, you know, factor those two for profits in there, maybe one, I'm not sure.
Thought there was just one.
I like that.
Here, there, I'm just saying, you know, I hope you don't get a whole line of for-profits mixture, because you gave to, two years in a row to one that is a for-profit. I'm sure they made a good, they made good money on that event, because it's well attended. I heard a lot of positives about it.
I'd like to wait, one more point. I know you made a comment about it, and I think Mr. Alvarez may be going that direction about option one. The seven eighty, seven ninety-seven thousand dollars ending balance there, and then somebody said, well, you only give four eighty out. What's happened to the rest of the balance? I want to make sure we leave here, there's not a funny math going on here. There's a lot of work papers y'all don't have. There's an assumption in 2017 that whatever's coming in, about one point three, I got about one point three in city expenses, so, excuse me, so they really don't have nothing reserved. The remaining between the seven eighty-seven and the four eighty, which is the same amount that we allocated last year for outside agencies, I just used the same number. The difference between those two number is starting to build the reserve. That's all I'm doing. Now, if you want to go above that, that's fine, but I think at some point in time, y'all were talking about while it goes, having to reserve, that option one does create that reserve technically. I want to make sure y'all understand that there's not funny math going on.
No, I feel like it's better to help them this year, and then they firmly know next year it may not be there, but they know that going into next year, and they have to, you know, operate their budgets accordingly.
It's a decision we make each year.
Yeah.
Separate, and, yeah.
No, I agree. I think option three is an excellent, at least it's the best option that we have.
Wouldn't it be nice to send them a letter, tell them that's what we're thinking about, and get some feedback? That a way we get them all, you've talked to some.
Not all of them, no, no, I just, anyway.
I think because they've all been notified that there's such a reduction in what they're going to receive, I suspect they'll all be very grateful for any additional money they receive.
Agreed.
They shouldn't be surprised next year when they come up and ask for money, and there's not much there. I mean, that's the.
Well, under option three, we're recommending for next year based on our projections that there would be a hundred and sixty-four thousand for outside agencies, and sixty-four that would be for the Victoria main program. So that's a hundred thousand dollars for outside agencies.
Compared to five hundred and.
Well, it's burning through our reserves, and we won't be able to do it very long.
Is what it is.
We won't.
I just had one question. I was looking at the operating fund, that the community center fund, because I was going to question why we didn't just go ahead and take that down for option three. But I'm going back through the statements of revenues and expenses for the community center.
We're using.
Changing net position already was, it wouldn't work.
The only thing you're doing is if you, I don't interject, if you were cut back, then what you do is prolong any type of further improvements you want to do out there. That's all it is to.
Yeah, I was looking at, it doesn't work without that transfer.
I have kind of a mechanics question.
There's your.
Because if we, if we decide to go with option three, there's been some discussion, though, that we don't want to be in a situation where we're having to ask them for money back. But we've been paying on option one, so we would owe some money to some folks right now if we pay this quarterly. I'm just kind of wondering mechanically if we're going to get ourselves into problems.
The way I envision this, say you want to go option three. I continue going out with the current receipts, I'm paying that out, with the given fact that the end of the year, fourth quarter, air rub and make hole, whatever the eighty percent is. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So there's no way I can overpay somebody.
So these numbers, and in option three, aren't, so these numbers in option three are not, these are not the numbers we're agreeing to so much as eighty percent?
This is the, exactly right. This is the assumption in play, because we still got some month to go to collection, everything else. So I'm going to continue collecting, still pay out whatever their contract is. But towards the end of the year, we're going to need to amend the contract. I'll pay out the remaining out, up to eighty percent of the allocation.
Thank you. I like that.
Okay, so we can't get ourselves in trouble.
Because I'm, there's no, it doesn't make any sense right now. I go tomorrow and pay out eighty percent to whatever.
Oh, yes.
I need to wait. So what happens if, if a hotel goes further south?
Yeah.
I don't want to do that.
Less of a program next year, just eat into it. Understood. Okay, do you, does everybody have a consensus? Are we okay? Y'all want to do three, option three?
Three.
Seeing that, okay. You have your direction.
Thank you for that.
Yes, and so Thomas will do applications then to the outside agencies with understanding that.
Based on the assumption that council will be allocating about a hundred thousand dollars for those outside agencies.
For next year.
For next year, that's right.
Approximate, yeah, because you got to start.
Yeah, you don't want to do that, okay.
I don't want next year's expenditures of that. I would like to pursue the idea, and I'd like permission to work with Mr. Aranha to look at a different policy shift to it, where we're looking at actual money that's in the bank to be spent as opposed to projected.
That may be having a weight of gear. I'm not, no funding.
Maybe.
For longer.
If council would like to, to investigate that option, it would, excuse me, I'm sorry, it would impact the calendar of when we put out the applications for, for outside entities to apply for the grant funds. We would typically be doing that right now in order to make sure that we get the process handled and a recommendation back to council as part of the regular budget process. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a problem to push it back. I just want to make sure that council's aware that that's what the impact of that would be.
Busy, busy right now?
Nah.
Can I make a suggestion? That might be something over a three-year process, that we can flip it over in about three years. You know, we have to make some choices about how much to hold back each year, and then make, I don't know if there's an internal policy required or something, you know, it's not a ordinance or anything, but it's a policy discussion.
We like to have a reserve, but otherwise than that, so.
I wouldn't have been the whole reserve. I just wanted it as a percentage.
Well, and that's why Gilbert's projections here are showing that you still have a, well, doing option three, you have a two hundred and fifteen thousand, assuming all the marks are hit, so, no.
Well, I was kind of thinking their, their applications may not be that directly related to what we have available to allocate. I think we could probably continue to move forward with the application process. I mean, I've written grant requests before, and you just ask for whatever you can get. And so I would think.
I always ask for about, what, a hundred and fifty percent more than we have?
Well, I've seen the, the program just balloon so much, and so it should control the.
So I think what, I think my direction right now, it sounds to me like majority of council's okay with the applications going out. We won't say how much money is available for allocation, and then we'll work with Mr. Bocknight on a potential policy about reserves. So, okay, is that?
That sounds good.
Yeah, we're fine.
Well, the potential policy of what's our minimum balance, we're going to try to carry. But even, even this, let's say, could go south on us, and reserve, not a good policy.
Okay.
You're going to tell them that about eighty percent of their funds, hopefully they're going to receive, or?
I wouldn't say there's an eighty percent in stone. There are still the unknowns.
Well, we need to do contract amendments to make sure that language is very clear on, so that's going to be our next step, is to come back with contract amendments, so.
So, did y'all get your sales tax numbers, speaking of projections? I don't know how you're doing it, but I hope you keep doing it.
I liked the previous number. I was, I was in the plus. Now I'm back to normal.
Yeah, but I mean, you're, what, tenths or hundreds of one percent off, so good job. I meant to say that at the beginning of the meeting. That concludes our regular agenda.
Yes.
We do have an executive session across upstairs, and so, thank you.
She's using a gypsy, and she's pretty darn good. If I can find the announcement, there it is. The city council will recess now for executive session on the seventeenth day of May 2016 at seven forty PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code Section 5501.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interest due to the fact that deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party. Thank you.